...your calming presence, but also the very high level of discipline and competence that you bring to those situations. Yesterday in committee, we talked about when you came to the Coldwater Fire. I'm sure Mr. Labonge can tell similar stories about you at Griffith Park. And the list goes on and on. It's been a real privilege getting to know you over the past year, and it's going to be an equally high privilege to work with you over the next couple of years. One thing I just want to say again, and then we'll give you a chance to tell us why you want to be the Fire Chief. But I just think, just cannot be emphasized enough, is that you have found a way to bridge this gap between the management of the department and the employee organizations. And it is so critical, because in Fire Department especially, everyone ought to be on the same side. Everyone ought to be on the same page. And where we used to have rancor in the past, we now have cooperation. And it's such a delight as a council member to see that. I want to congratulate you and encourage you, although I said yesterday, you don't need any encouragement, because it's clearly in your blood, to continue that level of cooperation and good relations, so that none of the issues that happened in the past come forward. At the same time, we're all looking forward to you to deal with these very thorny, very complicated issues that, you know, unfortunately have been in the newspaper over the last year, but we're very pleased with the steps that you have taken collaboratively to deal with them. So, folks, before you make your speech, I just want to say I present to you the next Fire Chief of Los Angeles, Douglas Berry.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm indeed pleased and proud to be before you today. I'm particularly pleased because I have my family with me, my wife, Verberta, one of my daughters, Sabrina and Crystal, and my granddaughter, Taya. I also have members of the Fire Commission, Mr. Arnett Hartsfield, one of our retired African-American firefighters, one of the original Stenturians, and my command staff, employer organizations, all here to support me. So I'm really, really pleased to be before you. As many of you know, I was appointed as the Acting Fire Chief in December 2006, and a few months later, I was appointed as the Interim Fire Chief, which was April of 2007. During the time as the Interim Fire Chief, I assessed the needs of the department, I evaluated the department's policies and procedures and practices, and I made, and are continue to make, necessary reforms to strengthen the department overall.
Standing to thank Chief Berry for taking on the responsibility of the Chief Engineer of the Los Angeles Fire Department. District Six Councilmember Tony Cardenas asks why the chief believes he can bring about the needed change in the department.
Thank you for offering yourself to this responsibility. I know it's, in my opinion, a double-edged sword. It's a great honor to take on that responsibility, yet with it comes responsibilities that have to be overcome. For example, in our face today, something that affects the people of Los Angeles by the coffers of the general fund is when discrimination and/or hazing goes on, and then it culminates in some kind of either lawsuit or settlement or what have you. The money that is actually utilized and put out there actually comes from the same fund where we need to build streets and roads, where we need to trim trees, where we need to pay firefighters and police officers, et cetera. So it really is a waste of funds when we find ourselves in that situation. What makes you think that you have what it takes to actually overcome that once and for all, something that's been going on for decades, something that some people, even within the department, I'm sure, think, well, boys will be boys? It's a culture that isn't a Los Angeles culture. It's a culture that is something that happens in every city throughout the country and county. What makes you think you're going to change that once and for all in this city? My time, please.
Thank you, Councilman. Just two things. Number one, I think the most important thing is that we have unparalleled support and partnership between the Fire Department management, the employer organizations, the Fire Commission, the Mayor's Office, and the council. I've been unparalleled in the 32 years of my career that I've seen it to such a level that it is today. In addition to that, the Fire Commission of the department has developed recommendations for an audit action plan. We're working with them and with the stakeholder groups, the employer organizations, to fill out that plan and development, and implementation of that plan will get us where we need to go.
District Fifteen Councilmember Janice Hahn says this is a stellar appointment, and adds that she believes in Chief Berry's ability to be a reformer, which is what the department needs at this time.
Like the idea that you've been a 32-year veteran of the department, and I love it when we have, we give someone like you the chance to be the top manager of a department that you've served, and you've come up through the ranks. I think that sends a great message to all of our city employees in all of our departments that, you know, if you work hard, if you show leadership, if you've been there, you have an opportunity to one day run the very department that you've been given your life to. So I think it says a lot. And I believe in your ability to be what I think you need to be right now, and that's a reformer. I really think you have the qualities it's going to take to reform the department. And I think we're all feeling the frustration, you know, as are certainly the taxpayers of the money we're having to shell out to settle some of these lawsuits. And I think we're all really believing, you know, enough is enough. We've got to figure out how to get that under control, and I think you're the person to do that. You know, our controller, you know, her audit was pretty scathing. It pretty much said, people of color and women overall have said they were victims of harassment at some time in their tenure in the Fire Department. So that stuff just has to end. And it's unfortunate, because as Ms. Gruel said, most people out there love our Fire Department. They love the men and women, and the majority of the men and women who work hard in the Fire Department, put their life on the line every day, are very well-respected in the community, very loved, and very needed.
While rising in support of Chief Berry's permanent appointment, District Seven Councilmember Richard Alarcon brings up the hazing issue the department has experienced and asks about the 24-hour work shifts.
And I am just not convinced that we are on a track to eliminate the kinds of hazing and pranksterism that occurs. And I know you are well familiar with, having been on the department for 32 years. I'm not hearing anything specific that would alter the course. I do know that firefighters work 24-hour shifts, and that that's rather unique throughout the nation, because I think the vast majority of departments throughout the nation, they work on eight-hour shifts. And there is some concern that because of their proximity and their relationship of working closely together, that in fact, that is causing them to do things that otherwise wouldn't be done. So one side of it is, I'd like your response to whether you think that the 24-hour shift is contributing to some of that behavior. And number two, I don't think the disciplinary action is strong enough in this department. I think that it needs to begin at the first level. The first supervisor needs to gain the culture to rid it out of the department. Some of the things that go on in the Fire Department are not only wrong, they're dangerous, they have racial intonations, anti-gender actions, you know, sexual preference, intimidation, all kinds of things are wrong. And so I have not seen a specific agenda. It's not, the rhetoric is there, but, you know, you're not going to train this problem away. I think you need to scare it away. And I think you need to take some severe action on the perpetrators of these kinds of acts. So if you need backing, you have my support. And having said that, I can say that I'm a little familiar with human relations and labor relations, and I can tell you that unless you get a handle on the disciplinary action process and send a strong message that you will not put up, you will not tolerate these kinds of actions, it will continue, and we will continue to get sued, and we will continue to pay out taxpayer money, and lose the opportunity to provide even more public safety services. It's a cyclical thing. I commend you for your career. I hope that you're up to this task. In fact, I believe that this is why you exist, that your major task is to rid this department of this blight of action that is negative, and we're here to back you up in that job.
Councilman, if I could respond. I agree, discipline is a key component in correcting the areas that we need to be corrected in, but I think it's one of three components. As I stated earlier, I think the first part, we have to send a clear message of what is going to be expected and what is going to not be tolerated. I think the second part is training. When I say training, part of, a key component, and you talked about the 24-hour shift, one of the key components, or the most important element of our department are the captains in the station. We need to provide them more training as far as how to recognize situations early and how to address them. I think that's something we can definitely do a better job, and that's part of what we're going to be doing, because it all starts, you know, in the field, it all starts at the fire station, and there's an officer there 24 hours a day. We need to give them the tools they need, number one, to recognize, and then to take the proper action. The third part, the discipline is part of it. What we have done, we've developed disciplinary guidelines that hold firefighters, captains, and officers, all officers, at a higher standard than what the standard city employee is held to. And that was all done with the stakeholders group. All the employee groups weighed in on that, and I think those are the elements that are really going to bring us where we need to be.
Expressing his gratitude to the entire Fire Department, District Ten Councilmember Herb Wesson says he is pleased with the appointment, and he welcomes Mr. Berry as a new permanent Chief Engineer of the Los Angeles Fire Department.
What I want to say first is how proud I am of the department's ability to do their job. This is, in my opinion, where it relates to firefighting, where it relates to outreach to the community, the best Fire Department in the nation. And I recognize that there are problems and huge challenges that you have to face. Based on the relationship that you have with the upper brass and with the rank and file, I'm optimistic that you will make the changes that we on this council want and need to see to help elevate the comfort level of the rank and file and the citizens of Los Angeles. Now, I have always believed that this country that we live in is the greatest country on the planet, but let us be honest, we have flaws and we need to make changes. Chief Parks referenced the historic significance of your appointment, and that is a bigger thing than I think people have referenced today. I hope I live long enough so that I can see the day when people are judged by their deeds and their actions and not by the color of their skin. And the only way we will get to that point is when you have people of color and you have women in positions of power, and you guys do the job and you do it good. So I'm very pleased with this appointment. I'm very proud of you, but more importantly, we are sending a message, a symbol you will become, that anything, anything is possible if you work hard and if you dare to dream. Nothing is impossible. So welcome aboard, Chief. I'm excited about this opportunity to serve with you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. That concludes the council members. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Our new Fire Chief, Chief Berry. Congratulations.
President, Mr. President, can we take a group shot?
Group photo in the center, group photo.
Shortly after the vote, Chief Berry was officially sworn into office by the mayor at a ceremony outside of City Hall. We congratulate the 32-year veteran of the Fire Department in his new position as permanent Fire Chief. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by simply using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West Los Angeles, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, beginning at 10:00 a.m. That concludes our program for the week ending September 21st, 2007. On behalf of Jack Pulpjoy and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Rasha Goal. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
for Friday, September 28th, 2007. We're here in the John Farrar Memorial Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by Councilmembers Richard Alarcon, Councilmember Tom Labonge, Councilmember Jan Perry, Councilmember Wendy Gruel, and we are awaiting quorum, but we will begin our presentations as is customary. Each Friday, we honor notables from the community and from the city family, and bring to light many of the good deeds that they are doing throughout our city. So we will begin that shortly, but first, let me welcome our viewers on Channel 35. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 every council meeting on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. We are also rebroadcast in the evening, and we are available online through the city's homepage at lacity.org, where we have live streaming webcasts of all of our council meetings. We also are available, in terms of our archived meetings, online at lacity.org, and video on demand allows you to pull down old council meetings and to listen or watch any of the proceedings from our past meetings. Finally, you can always use your telephone, 213-621-CITY. That is called council phone, and it avails you of our council meetings and any of our committee meetings via audio through our city's telephone system. Again, I want to thank council members who are here, Councilmembers Alarcon, Gruel, Labonge, Rosendahl. I'd like to call on the other council members who are expected here today. Councilmember Reyes is excused today. Councilmember Smith is excused today, and Councilmember Weezer is excused today. We are expecting Councilmembers Cardenas at 10:30, but Ms. Hahn, if you'll join us as soon as possible, Mr. Parks, if you'll make your way down, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. As soon as we have 10 members, we will begin. And thank you again to council members Perry, Gruel, Rosendahl, Labonge, and Alarcon. If, I know we usually do this on Tuesdays, but if I could ask everybody at the outset before our meeting, we often start with a salute to our flag, and I'd like to ask Alice Stanley, our General Manager of Emergency Preparedness Department, if he would be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask everybody to please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll hand things over to our President Protem, Ms. Gruel, to handle the reins.
Excuse me. I'd like to recognize our President of the City Council, Eric Garcetti, for our first presentation.
Can we get the handheld for afterthought? And we'll ask the Guzzo family to join us here. Thank you very much, and counsel at the podium. Thank you very much, Madam President, and council members. It gives me great joy today to celebrate a wonderful birthday here in the city of Los Angeles. Margaret, Margie Guzzo, was born Margarita Marie Plescia, on September 26th, 1907, in Los Angeles, California. To parents Francesco Plescia and Rosalia Mandela, who are recent immigrants from Sicily, Sicilia, Italy. We are celebrating Margie's 100th birthday here today in City Council. She grew up in downtown Los Angeles, near Wilson and 14th Street. She attended Jefferson High School and graduated in 1925, after which she worked as a messenger for Western Union. She married James, or Jimmy, Guzzo, at St. Patrick's Church on April 25th, 1927, and lived on Enterprise Street in South Los Angeles before moving to Eagle Rock to raise their three daughters, Shirley, Rosalyn, and Carolyn. Margaret was a dedicated homemaker, known for her cooking and hospitality. She supported a family with a long tradition of public service to Los Angeles that continues today. I believe Mr. Labonge knows some of the family members who have served, but the tradition of public service includes, among many, her husband, Jimmy, who began work in 1924 as a truck driver with the Street Maintenance Bureau of the Department of Public Works, and retired with 42 years of service. Her father-in-law, Rossi Guzzo, worked as an electrical helper for the Power and Light Department, which was the predecessor to the Department of Water and Power. Her daughter, Shirley Potter, recently retired with 32 years of service from the Department of Water and Power as well, and is here with us today. And her grandson is recently appointed Los Angeles Fire Department Battalion Chief, John Potter. In 1950, Margaret and James Guzzo relocated to Granada Hills, where she spent many years entertaining family and friends, refinishing antique furniture, and volunteering at Holy Cross Hospital and the San Fernando Mission. Today, on her 100th birthday, the Los Angeles City Council wishes Margaret Guzzo a very happy 100th birthday and many, many happy returns. Please join me in celebrating a century of life here in Los Angeles. Congratulations, Margaret Guzzo. And you have this certificate with you, with your team. It's been timed by all of the members. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So what's your secret to living 100 years? What's your secret?
I don't know. A man upstairs, you'll have to ask.
Fair enough. We'll ask the man upstairs. Thank you.
And Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Labonge would like to add a few comments.
Mr. Garcetti, it's wonderful to see the family. So special to know someone who's lived a century all in the city of Los Angeles, and a great graduate of Jefferson High School, and Monica, who I've known for many years, I'm very proud of, and all of you. So I just wanted to stand and join with Mr. Garcetti and send all my love, and my brother Marx loved too, to all the family. Happy birthday.
And some of you may recognize Bishu and Andrew Glazier, who are behind us as well, part of the extended Guzzo clan, and we really appreciate you bringing your grandmother here for her 100th birthday and celebrating it with us. So with that, Madam President, thank you very much. And I know Mr. Parks has been a good celebrator of many Centurions that we have here in the city of Los Angeles, but we look forward to many, many more returns, and thank you. God bless you, and here's to many more years. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation will be by Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and members. I have Jackie. Jackie's the attractive lady, okay? Jackie is with Animal Services. Today is my favorite Friday because it is Pet Adoption Friday. What we have before you today is a miniature Doberman Pinscher named Pepper. Pepper is looking for a home. He will not get any bigger than he is right now. He's about four years old. He has all of his shots, and he's been microchipped, and he's ready to go home. Again, I want to say that since we have been doing this Adopt a Pet program in the city of Los Angeles, that we do have a 100% adoption rate. So that's why Pepper is so excited that he can't speak, because he knows that the odds are that sometime today, he will find a home with some loving children, or just a grandmother or granddad. Oh, Pepper, come on, how can you not? In fact, council, the President today, Ms. Gruel told...
Thank you, Madam President and members. I have Jackie. Jackie's the attractive lady, okay? Jackie is with Animal Services. Today is my favorite Friday because it is Pet Adoption Friday. What we have before you today is a miniature Doberman Pinscher named Pepper. Pepper is looking for a home. He will not get any bigger than he is right now. He's about four years old. He has all of his shots, and he's been microchipped, and he's ready to go home. Again, I want to say that since we have been doing this Adopt a Pet program in the city of Los Angeles, that we do have a 100% adoption rate. So that's why Pepper is so excited that he can't speak, because he knows that the odds are that sometime today he will find a home with some loving children, or just a grandmother or granddad. Oh, Pepper, come on, how can you not? In fact, council, the President today, Ms. Gruel, told me that her son is walking around the house with a stuffed dog and a leash, and he tells his mother, "Mom, I'm practicing so when I get old enough to have a dog." Well, Ms. Gruel, Pepper may be the answer to your prayers. If not for you, that means Chief Parks is going to have to adopt another dog. But seriously, if you want unconditional love, you get it from a companion apt animal like Pepper. So I ask anyone who can see this, anyone that's here in the council chambers today, to adopt this companion animal. Save this dog's life. You know we do the best that we can to try to get our dogs adopted. We're not at a 100% rate yet where it relates to that. So not only will you get a best friend, man's and woman's best friend, you can save Pepper's life. So if you're interested in Pepper, who's got his little Adopt Me kerchief on, please Again, oh, look at it scratching. Wait, was there something else you wanted me to say? He told me to repeat the number, 888-452-7381. And we're going to have Jackie stay here for a little while, so if people in other parts of the building, if you're interested in Pepper, please come down quickly. I think we have, Ms. Gruel is interested. I think we have Officer Duarte that's interested. And so with that, please, Los Angeles City Hall, help me find a home for Pepper. Look at that face. Look at that face. No, not my face, look at Pepper's face.
They're both very appealing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I'd like to now acknowledge Ms. Perry, who has two introductions today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to call up the folks from Subcity Records. Hey, come closer, you can block out the background, be unobstructed. Hey, everybody. Come on, come close, come close. Here, come closer so that, you know, people can see you on TV and all that. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's with great pleasure that I recognize Hopeless/Subcity Records. This organization is one of those unique companies that uses their strengths and resources to bring about change. This small, yet generous company, made up of just 10 employees, has donated over $1 million to over 50 nonprofit organizations through their Subcity imprint label and Take Action Tour. Hopeless Subcity Records has supported worthy organizations such as A Place Called Home, Any Positive Change, Art City, Berkeley Free Clinic's Need Program, Crittendon Services, Debbie Zuber Defense Fund, Diana Price Fish Foundation, and the Foundation Fighting Blindness. This is just a few groups that they have supported. This incredibly generous record label has set the bar very high for all companies, large and small, and people who want to make a difference in their communities. If you ask the company's founder and president, Louis Posen, what's next for Hopeless Subcity Records, he'll tell you to continue to find ways to make a bigger impact, and that's exactly what they've done. They have been a positive force in our city, and their impact goes far beyond of the music that they have produced. And I wanted to commend them publicly for choosing to do more than just produce music, but to make our city a better place in which to have a family and to live. And I want to recognize President Posen, if he wanted to come up and say a few words. And while he's making his way to the podium, I wanted to also recognize Sharon Harris, who's the Director of Project Music. Sharon, raise your hand. Alan Pearson, who's General Manager of the company. Brian Belknap, Director of Operations. Melissa Becerra, media person from Hopeless Subcity. Erin Choi, Head of Operations. Eric Tobin, Director of Sales. Ian Harrison and Edwin Figueroa, Sales and Artist Development. Mr. President.
Sorry, the mic's right there. I'm visually impaired, I'm sorry.
It's right there, it's right there. You have to just stand up, and it'll pick up everything.
Councilwoman Perry, President, and council members and staff, my name's Louis Posen. I'm the President of Hopeless and Subcity Records, and on behalf of our company, we are honored to be here, and we, I express our deepest appreciation for this recognition. In the spirit of one of our great Americans, Martin Luther King, it's wonderful to be recognized, it's wonderful to feel important, but the true definition of greatness is serving others. And what is so great about this definition of greatness is that everybody can be great, whether you're a public service person like you, and we thank you for your service, or you work at a record label like us, or you're in the fifth grade, or you have a PhD, or you are in janitorial services, or you're a CEO, or your name is Bill Smith, or Bill Gates. We all have talents, passions, and resources that we can give, and if we choose to give those things, we believe that we can create a better Los Angeles and a better world. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd also like to invite to the podium Sharon Harris, who, whose organization has been the beneficiary of your organization's kindness and generosity. So Sharon, if you'd just say a few words about what it feels like to be the recipient.
Yes, thank you, and good morning. It's an incredible honor to work with Hopeless and Subcity Records. They have provided so many services for the youth that we support, from helping to train these youth from the inner city to get into college programs. Berkeley College of Music, we have been able to send 10 kids to Berkeley College of Music in part from the kindness of Hopeless Subcity, and we're very grateful to have an affiliation with them, and we thank the city for recognizing them. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing all your employees today. I'm not sure who's watching the office, but I do appreciate this, and we'll make it quick so everyone can go back to work. And I have this very nice resolution to give our city's recognition to Hopeless Records, Subcity Records, and it's been signed by everyone on the council, including the mayor, the city attorney, and the city comptroller. And so, Mr. President, I'd like to just give this to you and say a big, public thank you.
Thank you.
All the way back, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Don't go too far, because it's going to be a little... All right, thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I believe I have one more presentation if all the parties are here. Oh, good, they're here, all right. If all the participants in the Skid Row Neighborhood Watch Walk would come forward, I would like to welcome the Central City East Association, representatives from the Midnight Mission, representatives from the Los Angeles Police Department Central Division, representatives of the New Image Emergency Shelter, and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority Outreach Red Team. Did I miss anybody? Did I get everybody?
LAPD.
LAPD, Commander Smith and Captain Wakefield. Got everybody? Some of our folks are still coming in, but, and I'm proud to stand with all these individuals. These outstanding organizations join together every single month for, how many years now?
Two years.
Two years, with residents and business owners in the Skid Row community to create the Skid Row Neighborhood Watch Walk. The Neighborhood Watch Walk was designed to restore safety, dignity, and hope to a community that has been disproportionately afflicted by despair, poverty, crime, and in many cases indifference. United, these organizations have walked every first Wednesday of each month for more than two years, and I am just proud to say that I learn something each time that I walk with them. They walk together to demonstrate that we will no longer tolerate criminal activity in our community, and to stop people who are there to prey upon vulnerable members of the community, like people who are homeless and living on the street. The positive impact that this Neighborhood Watch Walk has had on the community is remarkable. Through the walk, organizers have helped many homeless people seek emergency or permanent shelter, reunite with their families, obtain medical and social services. This act of unity and empowerment has earned them national recognition, the International Downtown Association Award of Merit. The IDA Award is an extraordinary honor that recognizes exemplary projects in the field of downtown and urban revitalization. These organizations here with me today are truly deserving of this prestigious award, and I'd like to give them all a very big round of applause. I hope you'll join me. And their commitment to saving people's lives and revitalizing our city in downtown Skid Row, Central City East, has made Los Angeles a much better place in which to live. Now, I think what we can do is start with Estella Lopez, who is the Executive Director of the Central City East Association, just to tell you a bit about the award, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, council members. Yes, about a week ago, we were in New York City receiving the award from the International Downtown Association for the Skid Row Monthly Walk. The International Downtown Association is comprised of 1,200 business improvement districts throughout the United States and Canada, and each year they present awards for outstanding projects. Ours was unusual, obviously. Not only does Los Angeles represent the highest concentration of homeless individuals in the country, but the tact that we took as a business organization to be able to do something about the problem. You don't normally think of a business association getting involved in the social service arena, but you certainly cannot divorce the two when your community is Central City East. And while the problems that confront us in Central City East with the folks who are there for emergency treatment, they're seeking shelter, and many of them, as I'm used to saying, not living on the sidewalk, but dying on the sidewalk every day, is something that requires an enormous amount of resources. But what we knew we could do was to focus attention, refocus the community's interest in doing something about that human misery on our sidewalks. And what we did was we united with, and Councilwoman Perry failed to mention that she was a huge part of this as well, we united with the people who live in Skid Row, formerly homeless individuals. We united the business community with social services, with the city family, with the Los Angeles Police Department, and with outreach workers from the L.A. Homeless Services Authority. And we invited the media, we invited other elected officials, most of you around this horseshoe have been on that, on that, on that walk. Journalists, both from throughout the country and other countries, have come with us to look at Skid Row. And by doing that, by giving everyone an opportunity not to look at it on television, not to drive through it, but to walk it block by block, to see it, to feel it, to smell it, to understand it. I know that we began a chain of events that today has Skid Row having hope, having faith that a difference is going to come. And so to all of you, and each and every one of you that have been on the walk, thank you very much for taking the time, the support that you've given us, and Councilwoman Perry, you have been amazing, you are there every night with us. And all of the partners that have made this possible, please come with us, the first Wednesday of the month, 6 o'clock, we meet at 6:00 in San Pedro. We need you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lopez, and I wanted to just hold up for the camera their award, and you can see why Ms. Lopez was such a dynamic Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority representative for the city on the LOSA Commission, and while you were oftentimes the lone voice, you were a very brave voice with the difficult, difficult issues that we wrestle with. And while we're on that topic, now you're not seeing double vision, we have the founders and principals of the New Image Emergency Shelter here, and they've always been there for us when we finally convince someone to come off the sidewalk. New Image is there for us so that we actually have somewhere to take people, and they do it, and their arms are open wide all the time, 24/7, and it's the perfect example of why the county's money for homelessness should be brought together with our city money and our city initiatives. They have services onsite, they have strategies in place to take people on an emergency basis and move them into transitional housing, get them well, get them healthy, make sure they take their medication. And so I ask the county publicly, please join us with the money that you've set aside, I think it was $20 million, and I know they have unspent probably, what, $12 million? Oh, okay, all right, $8 million still unspent. New Image needs more money so that we can help the people get off the sidewalk and, you know, practice what we preach, which is if we ask you to come in for services, we'll actually have a bed for you. This doesn't happen in a vacuum. They are here because they help the entire city, the entire homeless population in the region, so if, now which one talks less? Okay, let her come up here. All right, just for a second. All right, you can stand there. All right, just say thank you, and that county, we need your money.
Thank you very much for your support. We've been around 18, going on 19 years now, providing services to homeless in the city of Los Angeles and throughout the county of Los Angeles, and certainly we'll continue to do that, but we do need your help in terms of being able to continue, Eric. We're currently providing a contract of 600, we're turning away, we're taking in about 650 a night, and we're turning away an average of 150 to 175 a night that we cannot provide services for.
How many?
So we need help.
Say that again.
We are turning away an average of, we're taking in 60 more than our contract holds, and we are turning away anywhere from 125 to 175 homeless a night that we do not have space available to accommodate. So we need your help. Thank you.
Okay, stop talking now, thank you. Thank you very much. That's just a snapshot. It's the largest homeless shelter in the entire city. Just remember that when we ask you for help, and I say that to my brothers and sisters just up the hill too, in the county, because they've got some money unspent, and we sure do need it. Commander?
And Ms. Perry too, we also have, Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words when you're finished.
Okay, great, and then Commander Smith and Captain Wakefield are here. I just wanted them to be here today so that I could show you, the officers who choose to do this detail in Skid Row, they receive special training, and they choose to do it because it's very difficult, it's multifaceted, you're required to not only understand law enforcement, mental health, family reunification issues, substance abuse issues, all while protecting people who in many cases are unable to be fully cognizant of why they are in the situation they're in. So I wanted to also recognize them, and if you'd just say a few words.
Good morning, everyone, honorable council members. Thank you very much. It's really an honor to be a part of this Skid Row Walk, and it's really an honor to be part of the Los Angeles Police Department, working in Skid Row with my partner, Captain Jody Wakefield, and on behalf of Chief Bratton and all the 402 officers that are working in downtown Los Angeles, thanks very much for all your support, I sure appreciate it. Thank you, Estelle, and thank you, Councilwoman Perry.
Absolutely, my pleasure. And then also the wonderful people here who are wearing the red shirts. Just to let you know, and Estelle's also got some of her staff here, these folks are tremendous, and they come from all walks of life, but they have a dedication and a devotion to improve the quality of life in Central City East. Now, I know Jeanette Rowe was going to try to make it, I don't think she's here, but Jeanette and her outreach workers from the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, each time we go out with them, we learn something new about how to treat people with humanity and compassion, but with knowledge and technical competence, with the objective of getting them off the street, because I think we all know what happens when you leave someone behind. So the recognition we're giving today is very well-deserved. And, Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Rosendahl wanted to say something before we adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to acknowledge those two twin sisters. Jan, could you let them both come up right next to you, and I want to make a couple of comments. The other day, Jan... The other day, Jan Perry said, "You've got to go see the New Images, Rosendahl." You know, we're on this homeless committee together. So I went over there, and I ended up playing dominoes with some of the guys, but I did not realize that they were twins. And I'm with one, and then I'm with the other, and then they're both looking at me, and I thought maybe I was having a super senior moment, and I wasn't. But I got to tell you, I am so proud of you and what you've done. Because not only is it a shelter, but I call it a comprehensive service center because you really do have support systems. But you walk in there, and there's a computer area there for people who want to get into that, there's a library there for people who want to do some reading, there's a television to sit there, there's dominoes to play. And what you give those men and women is dignity, respect, and a hook to a good future. And I just want to applaud the two of you for all you're doing. Bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we'll retire to the back for a photograph.
Thank you. I'd like to now ask Mr. Labonge for our next presentation.
We recognize and we should probably go and call Vivana.
We're going to call all those people out. Good morning, members of council, on this Friday, on this very special day as we honor people. This month was a very special month, as is every September, because it's the National Preparedness Month. Preparedness is extremely important for all of us, and whether it's a natural disaster like an earthquake, or a tragic disaster like an effect that we saw in New York City on September in 2001. But these children from our parks and our schools in Los Angeles participated in a program that our Department of Emergency Preparedness coordinated and organized, along with Recreation and Parks. And this was done to try to create a very special poster to give awareness about Be Prepared. Madam President, are you prepared?
I am prepared.
All right, that's what I want to hear. Okay, I want to ask somebody if I see out there, are you prepared, sir? He's not prepared. You're going to hear this program. And Duke Russell, are you prepared, Duke? He's not quite prepared, so we got to get prepared, all of us. And that's what our Department of Emergency Preparedness has done, Mr. Rosendahl, has led the effort. Ellis Stanley and his team have led the effort for National Preparedness Month. And September is the month, we all got these very important emergency preparedness kits to be prepared. It's an L.A. thing, emergency preparedness. We should really encourage more of that. So Ellis, first and foremost, I want to salute you and your department for National Preparedness Month, which is every day of the year that we have to be prepared. Congratulations to the department, Ellis Stanley.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go here and here. And now also, we have here a very special student, very special student, Viviana Bella. Where is Viviana?
Right here.
Well, she's got the prettiest smile in all of Los Angeles right now. Doesn't she, Anna? Huh? She really does, Madam City Clerk. She is the student who created the image that you see right here that is framed. We don't want to block her. I'm going to put it right over here. Excuse me, young man, you could help me just like that, so the cameras of 35 can zoom right in here on Be Prepared. Viviana, I want you to say a few words about what was your inspiration as an artist? And how you came about to draw this very important poster about preparedness.
Well, I was thinking of stuff we need to be prepared for an earthquake. And most importantly, we need food to survive, and water, and little stuff like, we need a flashlight for, just in case the electricity goes out, and matches to cook the food, and just little things. We need like a blanket, toilet paper for, well, just stuff we need.
And your art says it all, doesn't it? Give Viviana a big hand. This is your poster to take there. I'll just have to hand that to you. And also, this partnership doesn't happen just alone. And look at these big, I want to get down here, look at these big, beautiful students right here who've done a great job and participated with our Department of Recreation and Parks. But we have some corporate sponsors, and I want to give a shout out to them as well. They're going to get special recognition. First and foremost, located just outside the city of Los Angeles, on the banks of the Los Angeles River, the one and only KABC Television. Give them a big hand right there. Our very own Department of Recreation and Parks, give them a big hand. Our Department of Public Works, we're going to do this, folks. We're going to give a one clap for everybody now to expedite. The Department of Public Works, give them a big hand. All right. One hand here. The Goodyear Tired River Company. All right. The Port of Los Angeles, World Airports, L.A., Bank of America, 97.9 LaRosa Radio, The Human Relations Commission, Hagan Company, LLC, Ready America, Brookfield's Property, V100, Kaiser Permanente, The Sun Newspapers, The Community Redevelopment Department, The City Council of Los Angeles, The Mayor of Los Angeles, and all people in between. Here, here. But truly, it takes a team effort. It takes a team effort to be prepared, and I'm thankful for the participation, the corporate community, KABC, all the time. You're there for us, which is so special, on our firefighters program, what you have for the toys for the children. Let's give everybody a big hand. We're going to go in the back room for individual presentations, and we have some comments right here.
And Mr. Rosendahl.
Hold on, Mr. Rosendahl.
Is Mahara Christian there? Where is she? Well, tomorrow at Westchester Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., I'm holding one of these preparedness sessions. I will be there as well, the community will be there, and I wanted to thank her because she, and I'm going to give her the cert tomorrow because she supplied the water and other refreshments for the group. That's story one. But story two, Ellis Stanley, I got to tell you something. I've done three town halls with you, one in Westchester, I did a tsunami town hall in Venice, and just the other day up in the Getty, we did one on fire, brush, and preparedness. And you have been a tremendous asset to our city. You've made a huge difference for all of us, and I'm sorry to see you go, but I know you're moving into a position that's even going to be more effective on preparedness. Bless you all for your leadership. Thank you.
Tell us you're going to be recognized by Jan Perry and the council later on there. Very good words, Mr. Rosendahl. I also want to shout out for Carl Cooper of our Department of Recreation and Parks. Give Carl a big hand right there. Good job, Carl. And all your staff, real quick, name them out. Anna Burton right there.
Anna Burton, Carol Parks, Mona Curry, Lisa Hayes, Pamela Cummins, Owen Lynn, Cynthia Johnson, the whole team.
Give them a big hand. All right. Thank you, Madam President. And we welcome you. Madam President, I'll return the microphone to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, and thank you for that important message about emergency preparedness and awareness. We will, and for the clap, that was very nicely done. And we will now be recognizing for next presentation, Council District Six and Councilmember Tony
Thank you very much, Council President. In September of 2003, we officially designated Deaf Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. In tribute to Deaf Awareness Month in 2007, in Los Angeles, the L.A. City Council is honoring many deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals who have made significant contributions to their communities and beyond. I've asked each council district to join me in recognizing extraordinary deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals in their respective districts. Please join me in honoring these exceptional individuals, as well as the entire deaf community, as we recognize them in the council chambers today. Today's celebration signifies a closing of another successful Deaf Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. Let's give everyone a hand for all the wonderful work they've done for the last month. At this moment, I'd like to bring up Barb Velasquez and her furry friend. You'll find out who the furry friend is in a second. She's part of the Assistance Dog Program, and she's the director, and she'll be receiving the resolution on behalf of Sam Simon himself. The Sam Simon Foundation was founded in 2003 by Sam Simon, an Emmy and Peabody Award-winning writer, director, and producer with a lifelong love for animals. The foundation, privately funded by Mr. Simon himself, has the mission of saving the lives of dogs to enrich the lives of people. The Sam Simon Foundation rescues dogs from local animal shelters, saving them from the threat of euthanasia due to the overpopulation in the shelters. Some of these rescued dogs are professionally trained to become assistance dogs for people who are deaf or hard of hearing. These professionally trained, certified hearing dogs are matched with qualified California citizens, and they receive these dogs for free. The dogs can legally accompany deaf and hard-of-hearing people into public places such as grocery stores and restaurants. The Sam Simon Foundation also provides a pet visitation program that allows the dogs to socialize with residents of senior assisted living homes several times a week. The elderly citizens have experienced lowered heart rates and stress levels, as well as increased memory recall and social stimulus because of their interactions with the dogs. The Sam Simon Foundation also offers a mobile clinic that provides complimentary spay and neuter surgeries to dogs and cats belonging to low-income families living in Los Angeles. Through these services provided to the people of Los Angeles and the state of California, the Sam Simon Foundation continually seeks to fulfill its mission of saving the lives of dogs to enrich the lives of people. Let's give them a big hand. Okay? Did you want to say anything? Okay, please.
Council members, I just wanted to say thank you very much for this recognition. We're going to continue doing our best to pull as many dogs out of the shelters we can and make them hearing dogs for people that can benefit from their services. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Barb. Next, I have the honor of making the presentation on behalf of Council District 12, as my colleague Greg Smith was unable to attend council today. Our honorary, I'd like to bring up Dr. Barbara Boyd. Dr. Barbara Boyd was born in Birchwood, Tennessee, and moved to the San Fernando Valley in 1973. She attended graduate school at California State University Northridge in 1973 under the National Leadership Training Program and worked at CSUN ever since. She received a PhD in counseling psychology at the University of Southern California in 1973. Now I know why, one of the reasons why Mr. Smith is honoring her. That's his favorite alma mater. Barbara, who is also deaf, now teaches English and public speaking for deaf students at CSUN. She has received numerous awards for her endless dedication to deaf community, including being named Woman of the Year by the Greater Los Angeles Agency on Deafness and Professional of the Year by Impact, a nonprofit organization that serves the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Barbara has volunteered countless hours with the Jewish community, serving as a tutor and a mentor for deaf students. She has also served on the editorial review board of the scholarly publication Perspectives in Education and Deafness. Barbara has served as a symbol of integrity, service, and character. Her contributions to the deaf community are countless, making her an ideal candidate for the special recognition from the city of Los Angeles. And I must add, I only mentioned a few of her accolades and contributions to the community in the interest of time. Let's give Barbara and Dr. Boyd a great round of applause. Did you want to communicate anything?
Thank you, councilmen, for this recognition. Excepted on behalf of my friends, my students, CSUN, and we're really privileged to be in District 12. And again, thank you for this recognition.
Thank you very much. God bless you for all the wonderful work that you do. Next, it's my privilege to honor the person on behalf of Council District Six. Council District 14, represented by Jose Wezar, has a tremendous organization in his district. Can we have the participants from GLAD please come forward? As Mr. Smith was unable to be here to make his presentation, Councilmember Wezar sends his apologies and has given me the honor of making the presentation on behalf of Council District 14. The Greater Los Angeles Agency of Deafness, otherwise known as GLAD, was founded in 1969 and is dedicated to ensuring equal access of the hard-of-hearing and deaf community to the same opportunities, to give them the same opportunities afforded to their hearing counterparts. To that end, GLAD promotes the social, cultural, educational, and vocational welfare of its deaf and hard-of-hearing constituents. Under the leadership of Dr. Patricia A. Hughes, GLAD provides a wide range of direct programs and services while advocating for the needs of its constituents. GLAD plays a vital role in the Eagle Rock community and is an incredible resource for deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals throughout Los Angeles. Here today to accept this honor on behalf of Greater Los Angeles Agency on Deafness are Jennifer Olson, Deputy Director, and Rachel Braver, Director of Public Relations. Once again, thank you for your incredible passion and dedication to the needs of your constituents, and thank you for your continued presence in Eagle Rock.
Our CEO, Dr. Patricia Hughes, is working on the field today, so she wasn't able to make it. But she wanted me to tell you that she's sorry she couldn't be here, and she's very, very proud of receiving this award today. For many of you that don't know, GLAD is one of the largest and oldest social service agencies for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community throughout the world. We have one of the largest populations of deaf and hard-of-hearing people who live here within Los Angeles. So we have our work cut out for us. We're very, very nice to be recognized by all of you, by all of our peers. Thank you very much.
Next, we have a presentation by Council District 10 by the esteemed former Speaker of the State Assembly, Mr. Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, and to Mr. Cardenas, a friend of mine for a very long time. He's done some very good things, but if I had to describe him, it would be, he's one of the most sensitive individuals that I've ever had the privilege to work with, and I commend you for ensuring that we recognize Deaf Awareness Month. When he was in the assembly, you, he led the way in ensuring that people, regardless of what they looked like, or what their religion was, or what have you, that they were always recognized. So again, it's an honor, Mr. Cardenas, for me to serve with you again, and I'm sure you will continue your good works. This is special for me in the sense that for many, many years, my wife worked at a hearing impaired school in Culver City, Echo Horizon, which would mainstream hearing impaired children into society. And I saw the wonders of what this program could do. In fact, even as a Pop Warner football coach, I had an opportunity to I had an opportunity to coach two kids that were hearing impaired, and they were two of the best defensive ballplayers that I ever had. In fact, I was just walking around the track in my district, and this young kid came up to me and called me coach. It was wonderful. The individuals that work in this area truly care. And I'm proud to present a resident from my district, an individual that has a lot of credentials and has done an awful lot to make the lives better of individuals who have hearing difficulties. I honor today Bernice Allen. Bernice is the West Angeles Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Minister. You all know Bishop Blake. She works at that phenomenal church. She's also an interpreter at Long Beach and Cerritos College, and she has created her own company called Sign Me the Book. She is busy writing a book, a religious book, for those that are hearing impaired. And it's just my honor to present to someone who works very hard, who gives of herself. I mean, for six years, she's been the coordinator of West Angeles Church. She, again, let me restate, is a resident of the Great 10th District. She teaches American Sign Language to individuals from 18 to 60 years old, and I could go on and on and on. But with that said, it is my honor to present to Ms. Bernice Allen the certificate from the greatest city on the planet and ask Ms. Allen to say a few words. Ms. Allen, thank you for your service. Come get close to me, I don't bite. Come on. Let's give her a round of applause. Now, Mr. Cardenas bites, I don't bite.
Well, I would like to take this opportunity to tell you that I'm very grateful for this honor. And I want to commend and applaud you for recognizing the deaf community. And I just love the community, I cherish the community, I respect the community. I've learned and have grown so much with having a lot of deaf and hard-of-hearing friends in my life, and they've taught me a lot about God and about their culture. And they have just really shown me what the true value of love and respect is. So I feel so honored to be here to receive this. I want to thank you, Councilman Wesson, and then also thank my church, West Angeles, and Bishop Blake. And also, I thank my God, because with His grace and His strength, I've been able to stand here and receive this honor. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Council District 2. Councilmember Wendy Gruhl is ready to make her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And every year, you do such an excellent job in making sure that we honor individuals and organizations who have made a difference in the deaf community. I have the pleasure of recognizing Ms. Debbie Lutz, who has dedicated her last 12 years to teaching students from preschool to 5th grade. During her tenure at Satacoy Elementary School in North Hollywood, she has touched the lives of countless students and parents. She exercises her passion for teaching daily by helping her students develop the skills they need to become successful. She's been instrumental in creating a pilot program at Satacoy Elementary School to teach parents who speak multiple languages how to work with hearing-impaired children. Her activism has helped many students through this work. She believes that parent education is a solution in dealing with and working with students who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. She has developed a supportive base of parents who help make this happen. Debbie has set a powerful example for the students and children she serves. And we are so appreciative of the hard work that Debbie has done at Satacoy Elementary School. And so I'm pleased to announce, all of these students, many of which that I have had the chance to visit when they did a play at their school and their performance. And I can tell you that every single day that I go to Satacoy and get to interact with these students is one that gives me hope and encouragement and a lot of fun with these kids. So we wanted to make sure that Debbie came today with her students so they could see City Hall and see where I work, because I've come to their office, to their place and their school. But I'd like to thank Debbie Lutz and particularly her children, who are here to support her for her dedicated years of service for this community and to Satacoy Elementary School. Debbie.
Thank you so much for this honor. It's truly a pleasure for me to work with these students. I've been in the field of deaf education for over 17 years, 12 of which have been at Satacoy Elementary School. Satacoy has a wonderful program for the deaf and hard-of-hearing. It services students from preschool through 5th grade using an auditory-oral approach. We teach the students to develop oral language and listening skills. Our goal is for them to be mainstreamed into the general education setting. At this time, I'd like to introduce my wonderful assistant, Ms. Anhee. And Ms. Donna.
Hi.
And now my students, who are 2nd and 3rd graders, would love to introduce themselves to you.
Hi, my name is Destiny Nuska. I am 8 years old.
My name is Ever Maria Soto. I'm 8 years old.
My name is Timothy Rivera. I'm 8 years old.
My name is Monika Bavivia. And I'm 8 years old.
Hi, my name is Kriegerma Makeitai. I'm 8 years old.
Hi, my name is Fatih Hain. I am 9 years old.
Hi, my name is Alondra Kuzma. I am 8 years old.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Marchini. I am H U O.
My name is Baya Jalian. I am 7 years old.
Hi, everybody. My name is Demi Perez. I am 7 years old. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labanj was talking about such a great smile. I think we should have a smile competition. These kids look beautiful and wonderful, and thank you so much for coming to City Hall. I'm happy. Next, we have Council District 4. Mr. Labanj. Well, Herb went first.
First of all, let's give Tony Cardenas, Councilman of the 6th District. Tony, I want to thank you. I think what makes a city council or anybody of elected leadership special is when individuals step up and do something special. And I've been to a very important and organized deaf festival out at Sepulveda, and the work here is truly remarkable. Give him another big hand. Now, my designee is not here today, but I'm going to go to his home and visit his home and present it in person to Don Rosajar. I want to give him a big hand for his work there and all the work that he does in his work. Don, you're here, all right. I'm blind, I'm sorry there. I apologize, Dorothy. Don, how are you? Good, 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 good. Forgive me. Have you ever made a mistake, Ms. Han?
No.
Okay. Born in Los Angeles to deaf parents and watched his dad as leader of the deaf community and worked at Los Angeles City Hall as a structural engineer. Don, after college, made a determination to follow his father's footsteps and try to make the deaf community a better place, both locally and globally. And he returned to the USA from Vietnam just last month after teaching the deaf at two cities. First 16 years, he worked for the city of Los Angeles in our Bureau of Contract Administration, and on the same floor where his father worked is the Bureau of Engineering in this building. During these years, he was active in the city's Public Attitude Committee, which sought to improve the conditions for disabled people throughout the city of Los Angeles. He took leadership in both religious and secular communities. And as immediate past-present, he's serving for the Board of Community Associates of the Deaf and Advocate Movement. His father once served as its president. He also is the board chairperson of the California Home for Adult Death, a boarded care for elderly of deaf people, of which his father was one of its founders. Currently, he's semi-retired, working part-time for St. Matthew's Evangelical Lutheran Church in North Hollywood as a deaf mission developer. He is a longtime resident of Toluca Lake. I'm proud that he's in the 4th District. Don, let me give you a great love and congratulations. Okay, good to see you. I appreciate that, and I hope you forgive me for the mistake I made. Okay? Ah, okay, good job. Okay, good job.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have Councilman Dennis Zine.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, you're a good audience. We have a great audience here this morning. Thank you, Tony. And I have a presentation for our lovely lady, Susan.
Susan Glover.
Susan Glover. Susan's been living at the Valley Village Parthenia House, a women's group home in Winnetka since 1988.
That's right.
Valley Village was founded in 1971 by a group of parents whose common interest was having a child with a developmental disability, developmentally-disabled. And Valley Village serves many people in the San Fernando Valley, housed in my district. Susan enjoys going to dances, working on her ceramic pieces, and spending time with her care providers and her big Valley Village family. During the day, Susan attends the day program at Valley Village Developmental Center at the location of Sherman Way and De Soto, where she creates ceramic art pieces which are very original. Her art pieces are donated to many local community fundraisers which help raise money for the Valley Village Arts and Crafts Program. Susan's a wonderful artist who enjoys creating wonderful art pieces to help raise money for many community organizations. And she's always happy and cheerful and always capable of putting a big smile on everyone's face. And, and Susan, we have a presentation
All right.
for you. On the occasion of being selected as an honoree by the Los Angeles City Council during Death Awareness Month, on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Council District, it is with great pleasure that we extend our sincere congratulations upon receiving this great honor for you, Susan Glover. Congratulations for that.
Thank you.
And there's more to come. Because today is a very special day in your life.
Right.
What is today?
Today is my birthday.
Today's your birthday! Yeah! I want to sing. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Susan. Happy birthday to you. And we also have birthday greetings for you from the city of Los Angeles. You get double certificates today.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And I also want to mention, come on forward. Tell them who you are and what you do.
I'm Susan Bosler. I'm the Director of Development for Valley Village.
Go ahead.
Hi. Well, one quick thing.
Tell them who you are.
Hi. I'm Alex. I'm one of the administrators at Valley Village. And to this space is an example of our clients' work. We'd like to give this to Mr. Zine as a thank you for his endless support to us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Susan lives at the residence that you coordinate, correct?
Yes.
And you are?
My name is Barbara Smith, and I'm one of the administrators at Valley Village, and I run the house where Suzie lives.
And Valley Village has residential facilities, and they have the facility at Sherman Way and De Soto in my district, where people come to do arts and crafts and learn, and they serve the disabled throughout the San Fernando Valley. It's a wonderful program. We've been very supportive over the years. And Susan, you know how much we care for all the work that you do and Valley Village does for the people. So, thank you, Mr. President. And to you, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Tony.
Yes. We're going out of order. Ms. Han, I think, is late to another engagement. So, CD 15, Ms. Han.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't think I was going out of order. I just was told we were supposed to go after Tom Laban, so I, that's all. Okay, I'm going to honor Wendy Payne. Come on up, Wendy. And I'll say a little bit about you before we give you your congratulations certificate. Wendy is a schoolteacher. She graduated from USC in 1976, the same year she started teaching at USC. And since joining the school district, she's worked directly with deaf and hearing-impaired students in almost every part of the city. For the past two years, she's worked at My Willenberg Special Education Center, right in San Pedro, where she provided the staff and students with a sensitive and productive curriculum that she developed through 28 years of dedication to the deaf community. At the beginning of this school year, she was assigned to work with other teachers throughout LAUSD to share her expertise in this field. She is so deserving of being honored for Death Awareness Month because she has directly impacted the lives of thousands of deaf and hearing-impaired students throughout her entire career. She has worked to empower the very kids that oftentimes feel left behind. She is joined this morning in the council chambers by her family, her husband Rick, her sons Mark and Scott, as well as her boss, Marilyn Gethinney. So Wendy, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, it gives me great pleasure as presenting you as the honoree for my 15th Council District for Death Awareness Month. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you for so many young children that you've helped to empower and live productive lives.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. This is quite an honor, and I have to say, I love being a teacher. And so it has been a pleasure working with the students and with their families and with the school staffs. And this is just a nice, a nice little icing on the cake for the whole thing. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Rosendahl, 11th District.
First, I want to thank Tony Cardenas. This is really great, what you're doing here. You know, a lot of people do a lot of things, and to recognize interpreters and people who are deaf and making a difference is a huge thing. And bless you, Tony, for doing that. Bless you. John Masari, John, come on up. And Stephanie, come on up with him. I have an amazing story to tell you here. Born and raised in Los Angeles, John is renowned comedian and actor and travels nationally with his act, The JM Show, performing to sell-out crowds around the world. He also created the only superhero for the deaf called Super Deafy. Delivers inspirational messages to the deaf and hearing-impaired communities on the importance of preserving deaf culture, language, folklore, and heritage. In its 10th year, John's production company, Deaf Wood, has been very successful. His ability to transform himself into various comedian characters, all individuals with their own set of gestures, patterns, of signs...
their own set of gestures, patterns of signs, personality, and message is both inspiring and entertaining. And because of his incredible skill of captivating audience, he has a huge fan base that extends throughout the world. He is also a spokesperson for Sprint Video Relay. And you know what Video Relay is? That's when those who can hear can sign and, and words come out, and that can be done. And in John's case, he's third-generation deaf, but his children, two children, are not hearing impaired, so this is a way in which he and his wife, who's also deaf, can communicate, and words happen in a video relay. And of course, his children, 13, 16, know how to sign as well. Next month, John will have the honor of serving as a cruise director aboard a cruise ship for deaf individuals. The Freedom of the Seas, the largest ship owned by Royal Caribbean, will set sail for a week with 4,000 deaf individuals aboard. In addition to his work in the entertainment industry, John works full-time for the LA Superior Court system, where he is one of two certified deaf interpreters for the Los Angeles Superior Court system, working primarily at the West Los Angeles and LAX Courts. Committed to serving the deaf and hearing impaired community, he is known for being one of the top interpreters in his field. And I must say, the criminal justice system is better off to have somebody that can help explain things to deaf people so that they get true justice, and it's a significant issue. And as I said in my opening, he's third-generation deaf, and his wife is deaf, but his two children aren't, and they communicate with that video thing. And if you would indulge me, I'd like John to be able to say a few words. He's a true role model and leader for all of us in this great country.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Wow, I'd like to say thank you very much, but really, I can't do this, all those things without my family, Lauren, who's really has supported me all the way through, and also Stephanie for making this happen. I want to tell you, in the court system, it's very challenging for most deaf clients who have a little bit of language or no language at all. They enter the system, and obviously, they speak at an advanced level of English in the court system, and the sign language interpreters, American Sign Language interpreters, are great, but for those deaf clients who have a little bit of language, minimal language, it doesn't match them because they don't have language, and the sign language interpreters are specialized in American Sign Language, and that's what they study. Now, here in LA, it's a special place for deaf interpreters that are called intermediary That's why I'm working here. And I see the deaf clients, you know, their eyes wide open, and they feel so good to go in the court system and, and feel the same as others with that. And I'd like to thank LA for this, and God bless you.
And I have a quick certificate that I would like to give him, and it says, "Is hereby awarded the certificate for exemplary service to deaf and hearing impaired individuals. Your work has helped better the lives of thousands of people in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for providing an invaluable service to our community."
Once again, please assist me in thanking the deaf community and the hard-of-hearing community, and all the people who have served each other throughout Los Angeles that we've In Los Angeles, we're learning more and growing every day, and one thing I'd like to remind everybody that we've had for the last four years and will continue to do so into the future, have a Deaf Festival, which just occurred last weekend. I want to thank my staff and the city staff and all the people who came to make it a successful event. Los Angeles is now the host of the largest Deaf Festival in the country, and also, in addition to that, one of the few Deaf Festivals that is free across the board for information and enjoyment for everybody who comes. So once again, thank you all very much, and we look forward to 2008 being a bigger and better Deaf Festival Awareness and also a Deaf Awareness Month as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. I'd like to recognize Mr. Weston for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to just make a quick announcement that Pepper, the little miniature Doberman, has been adopted, so we still have our 100% adoption rate. I have some special guests that I was unable to get on the agenda, but I'd like to at least introduce them. I have with me an old friend, many of us, we all know, Consuela Mackey of Operation Confidence is here today, and she brought this very special young man with us, Dr. Willie Walker, who is the pastor at Noah Ark Missionary Baptist Church in New Orleans. One thing that makes this young man so special, during the tragedy, he was involved in search and rescue efforts along with actor Sean Penn, and because of the pastor's efforts, they were able to save hundreds of lives, children, men, women, and, and children, and we thank you and God bless you for that. In Spike Lee's documentary, When the Levee Breaks, if you watch that, you will see that Pastor Walker is featured in that, and he's also in a book written by Douglas Brinkley, The Great Deluge. That's a word I need to practice on. It's on the New York Times Best Selling List. If we could welcome Pastor Willie Walker.
Just say thank.
Thank you. Thank you for your warm welcome. I thank God for being able to use me in a time, along with first responders, to help many of his children who were destitute, stuck on rooftops, and just, it's just awesome for what you all have done for me since I've been here in this short time. I thank the council president, as well as the body of the council, all of Los Angeles, for its warm reception of me, and also Operation Confidence, who has brought me here on this journey, and I look forward to doing many glorious things to help the people of New Orleans in our return to a regular or better lifestyle in New Orleans. I say again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are very pleased to welcome the president of the New Orleans City Council here on Wednesday. He was in town with the Florida Lee Ambassador, so it was great to have New Orleans here all, all week long, so appreciate it very much. Without recognizing Mr. Parks for our next presentation.
Good morning, Council. Could I have Dr. Duchesne in our Association of Black Women Physicians? Come on up. Get it close so we can get it nicely in the camera there. Colleagues, today I am here to honor a group of young ladies that serve a very important function in our community. Not only are they physicians in their own right and perform their services, but on the other hand, they're a part of an organization, the Association of Black Women Physicians, that were organized specifically as a network of black women physicians committed to improve public health and welfare through the advancement in knowledge concerning women and community health. This association has served many philanthropic activities by providing funds to individuals or projects related to the health concerns in the black community. They've also endeavored to enhance personal and professional quality of life of present and future black women physicians, and I think this is where they served a tremendous role in not only attracting, but helping young women, black women, get through the medical school process. They began in 1982 with 50 members, and they were mainly physicians and medical students. Today, their numbers go over 100, 400 members. They're involved in numerous activities, community services, and events, and they also have forums in which they support community, the community education scholarships and network, social networking in the black community. I wanted to honor them because I see them individually all through the community, where they are part of not only providing health care, but part of a variety of other organizations. But I wanted to honor them specifically as an association, because they do so much individually, but collectively, this organization drives the whole issue of medical care in our community. We only have to look recently at the closure of Martin Luther King Hospital Drew Center to understand what the impact it is when we do not have access to those medical, that medical care. And then, when we see the shortage of nurses that are going through our schools, the shortage of doctors that are willing to come in and provide that service, we begin to see that network and that safety net of medical care disappear. And so I think it's important to acknowledge them as a group, but again, clearly understand they reach out far larger than just being a part of an association. They're actually saving lives in their practices on a day-to-day basis. I wanted to provide, Lorenzo, a resolution signed by every member of the city council and say, "Thank you for what you're doing."
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Dr. Duchesne to come up and also introduce the other members and make some comments.
Thank you. Thank you to Councilman Bernard Parks and all the city council here. The Association of Black Women Physicians is honored to be here, and we thank you. This is our 25th year of service. We are the oldest organization for black women physicians, and our signature programs, as he mentions, is our scholarships for women. We've given out over $500,000 in scholarships over the years, over these 25 years. The other thing that we do is we do mentorship and community education. I have received, I've been a past scholarship recipient. Most of the time in medical school, my count was negative, so I was happy when it was zero. So it was a relief to me to receive the scholarships from this association, and I want to thank you again for that. I'd like to mention our executive director. I'm honored to be working with her to carry on the goals and vision of this organization. She's been a nonprofit for many years and received several community awards. This is Ms. Sandra Bankhead.
Good morning. I feel honored to represent the Association of Black Women Physicians, and I want to thank Councilman Bernard Parks in advance for acknowledging the work of these phenomenal women, and also for your support. I consider Los Angeles truly my home. I was born at General Hospital. I attended 28th Street School. I went to John Adams Junior High School, Manual Arts High School, and USC. So I am truly a person from Los Angeles. My children were raised here, and I frankly was in retirement when the association asked me to come and join them. And what attracted me to them was their gift of giving. I was given a gift of a tremendous gift of almost $100,000 by an anonymous donor to attend USC. She didn't want me to know who she was, and that was okay with me, but I felt I had a responsibility to work with organizations that were also giving. I found this organization and my dream through the Association of Black Women Physicians, I find their tireless work. For example, Dr. Dusette has just finished a 24-hour shift at Kaiser. She's an anesthesiologist, and we depend on her a lot in that hospital. Doctors give freely of their time, they do pre-health workshops, they give scholarships and health education. I want to mention just briefly that we're going to be holding our 26th annual Scholarship and Charity Event on October 13th at the Biltmore Millennium Hotel, and we also have a yearly obesity awareness event that will be held in January. At this time, I'm honored to introduce our founder, Dr. Jessie Elsharad. She's a native of a small town in Hollinville, Mississippi, the 10th of 11 children. She grew up picking cotton for $2.00 a pound, 10 hours a day, in the sweltering heat of the Mississippi Delta. She went on to become magna cum laude graduate of Tugalo College, and she was the first pre-med student of Tugalo College to attend Harvard Medical School. She blazed a trail to Harvard Medical School for other Tugalo students for many years thereafter. Her activities as a medical profession expand the spectrum. A private pediatrician and infectious disease consultant for both adults and children, visiting professor of pediatric infectious disease at UCLA Medical Center, and hospital epidemiologist. She was the leading force in the formation of ABWP, a leader of the movement of women physicians in Southern California, and one of the leaders for women and children in the United States. Our founder, Dr. Jessie Elsharad.
Thank you very much, Councilman Parks, Los Angeles City Council, the Chair. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to stand before you today, and first, just let me commend you on your service to your various districts here in Los Angeles. We thank you for your service. The Association of Black Women Physicians empowers women to lead in health for ourselves and for the community. And I'm proud to be here today, because we're now in our 25th year. We're the second organization of black women physicians to be formed in the United States. The first one was in 1975 in New York City. And we've survived all these years because these women are committed. We, as women, are committed to the health of ourselves and to that of the community. As I founded the Association of Black Women Physicians, I got appointed by Supervisor Kenneth Hahn to the Public Health Commission, so I understand your service very well. And we'd just like to thank you for acknowledging our efforts to provide health care to the community of Los Angeles. We do believe that health care is a right and not a privilege, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go in the back and take some photos. Thank you. And thank you very much for being here as well, and appreciate Mr. Parks' words. And Dr. Regina Benjamin is a close friend, and I know much of what she went through too as a trailblazer is mirrored in what you were talking about here today, so thank you very much and proud to have you here. Our final presentation is Mr. Dennis Zine from the 3rd Council District.
Our final presentation today will be for members of the Los Angeles Police Department Centurion Football Team, champions of the 2007 National Public Safety Football League Western Conference. Now, you gotta feel safe with these.
Give him a round of applause, guys. Give him a round of applause.
You gotta feel safe with these folks.
Well, some of them are big, Steve, except for you.
And then the other little guy behind you. LAPD officers who are part of the Centurion Football Team trade in their police uniforms for football uniforms to take a battering on the gridiron. Since 1978, the LAPD Centurions have been playing football for kids. This unique fraternity of Los Angeles police officers practice, play, and travel on their off-duty time to raise money for a variety of charities. For 30 years, the Blind Children's Center of Los Angeles has been the charity organization that the Centurions have raised money for. For the past several years, the LAPD Centurions have won the National Public Safety Football League West Coast Championship. This is a union of public safety agency football teams from throughout the United States. As Western Conference champions, the Centurions faced NYPD, finest football team, winners of the Eastern Conference of the National Public Safety Football League, and the national championship game in New York City last month. This is a classic gridiron battle between the two largest police departments in the United States, and the game ended with NYPD winning 36 to 20. Despite the loss in New York, the team had an outstanding year, beating teams from Las Vegas, Dallas, and the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Tremendous help from Eagles Ambassador. Tremendous help from Eagles and Bats Foundation President Arthur Casell, generous support from American Airlines, and through the efforts of Captain Steve Lenkenship, the LAPD 65 players and coaches, along with some family members, were able to attend the championship game in New York City. Many players in the league have played college football, with a few participants even having played for the NFL before joining law enforcement's organization. The Centurions are one of many law enforcement and public safety football teams that travel nationwide to play football and raise money for charity. The LAPD Centurions are proud to be a part of this organization that puts so much emphasis on giving back to the community. The Los Angeles City Council hereby congratulates the Centurions and all the members, the staff, for their outstanding work and for showing the best of Los Angeles. We have a LAPD Centurion Football Team champion of the 2007 National Public Safety Football League Western Conference, listing all of their accomplishments and listing the players, the coaches, the staff, and all involved. Normally, they get one side. You folks get the whole shebang, both sides. There you go, Coach. So congratulations to the LAPD Centurions. Tom Labange, always wanted to be a Centurion. Instead, he was a councilman.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zine. I want to congratulate all the officers. I remember when then Roger Giddon, who was the captain at Grand Park Division, wanted to borrow football equipment when I was an assistant football coach at John Marshall High. And from the second year on, I was for about seven years a defensive line coach. And I had a method, a coaching, that in between drills, I would make the players run laps. And the police officers thought I got dinged by a cop when I was a teenager because I made them run so much, but it made them stronger and healthier. But the relationship that the Centurions have had with the Blind Children's Centers to be commended. It's great camaraderie. It's great representation, even in your profession throughout the country. I'm just very proud. From Jerry Bennett, who some of you may know, to as the head coach for many years, and then all who have followed in his past, it's a great tradition of Los Angeles Police Department. And Dennis, I'm glad you brought these United States Champions in for recognition. Congratulations each and every one of you.
My name is Detective Payne. I'm the chairman of the Centurion Football Team at this time. I'd like to thank the council for acknowledging us today, especially Mr. Labange, who has been a part of this organization, who knows what it takes to be a part of this program. Basically, we are committed to service to this community above and beyond our duties as police officers. We go out, we play these games across the country on our own time, on our off days, on our vacation time. We buy our own equipment, our own airfare, we pay for to raise money so that we can donate to the Blind Children's Center of Los Angeles. I believe Mr. Labange was instrumental in helping the Centurions over 30 years ago forge that bond between the Los Angeles Police Department and the Blind Children's Center of Los Angeles. And we're proud that they are a part of us. We have a large volunteer staff that goes along with what we do. Unfortunately, today, the majority of them are not able to be here. They are all teachers or in education, and they are obligated to their duties today. So they could not make it. But they do spend a tremendous amount of time in helping us do the things that we need to do to function as an organization. Our coaching staff is a civilian coaching staff. Our athletic trainers are all volunteer civilians, and they do a tremendous job in helping us accomplish the goal that we set out to do, and that is to raise funds throughout the community and give to charity. We do have one of our longstanding volunteers here with us today, who I'd like to say a couple of words, Mr. Steve Getzoff, who has dedicated a tremendous amount of his personal time and efforts to helping us reach our goals. Again, thank you all for acknowledging us, and we look forward to continuing to serve the community above and beyond our duties as police officers. Thank you.
And I also want to acknowledge Steve Getzoff, who's helped many, many members of the Los Angeles Police Department, especially in times of crisis. Steve's always been there. And also represented the Los Angeles Police Protecting League here, Pete Repovich and Jack Hoda, two directors from the Los Angeles Police Protecting League. Steve, I know you give a lot to the people of Los Angeles and the police department. A couple of comments from you.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. Good morning. It's a lot of fun being part of the Centurions. Everybody thinks I'm a coach.
I'm the water boy.
That's right. I get to carry water out on the field. But one of the things that people don't know is that aside from giving their time, these football players, if they get injured, they're on their own. The city does not compensate them with being injured on duty. And so these guys come out, they risk their physical well-being, and they do it to help these blind kids. And it's just a privilege to be a part of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If I could say something real briefly, I want to thank the officers as well. I have the good fortune of representing the Blind Children's Center, and I've seen the incredible work that they do, and I know you all know that as well. So the money you've been able to raise, the funds you've been able to do, do a lot of good in our community and a lot of hope for children that are often overlooked. So we really appreciate what you've done. So congratulations, and I know we're gonna beat NYPD one of these years, even though they have four times as many people to draw from. We do pretty good.
We have the rematch coming up May 2008 here in Los Angeles, so...
Is that a pay-per-view thing on HBO?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And that is our final presentation. So, Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Alecon, Cardness, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Labange seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. And that's from the previous meeting? Which minutes are those?
Those are September 25th.
The 25th, thank you. Next item?
Convenatory resolutions for approval?
All right. Mr. Rosenthal moves. Ms. Hahn seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, then we'll come back to public comment as our first order after that. First items?
There are several requests for continuances. There is a request to continue item number 7 to October 2nd.
Okay. Is there any objection? If not, we'll continue item 7 till this coming Tuesday, that is, October 2nd. Next item?
Also, there is a request to continue item 23 to October 30th.
Okay. Is there any objection to that, colleagues? If not, we will continue item 23, 30 days, and that'll take us to the 30th of October. Seeing none, so ordered. Next item to be continued?
The final continuance is for item number 28, and that is also continued to October 2nd.
Okay. If there's no objection, colleagues, to that, we will also continue item 28 till Tuesday, October 2nd. Next items?
Item number 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Let's hold that on the table. I do think we might get 12 members for a moment, so let's hold that in case we can as an ordinance. Next items, please. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on it. I don't think we'll achieve 12 members then today. So item number 1, there are no cards, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Any members wishing to call it special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That'll go over one week to a second reading as an ordinance requiring 12 votes on the first reading. Next items?
Next is items number 2 through 7, with the exception of 7, and those are items which public hearings have been held. And for the record, item number 2 was scheduled inadvertently. No action is required at this time inasmuch as council has already continued this matter to November 20th.
Okay. Items 3 through 7, colleagues, anybody wishing to call any of those special? Sorry, 3 through 6 at this point? If not, if we can take that balance, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next is items 8 through 27, with the exception of item number 23, and those are items which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are certain items with cards.
Yeah, we have cards on 13, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 27. So we'll call those special. The other items, we will open and close the public hearing. Any specials, colleagues? Sorry, that was 13, 15, 18, 19, 20, and 27. Any other specials from 8 through 27? Seeing none, if we can prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Some of those are approved. 8 through 12 will go to a second reading, as will 14, 16, and 17 as ordinances. The other items, which are 21, 22, and 24 through 26, are approved. Next items, please. Or actually, sorry, if we can recess the regular meeting and call roll for the special meeting.
Alecon, Cardness, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and accor, Mr. President.
Okay. We have the first item, number 29. We have cards from the public. So we'll call that special, and if we can continue the special meeting back into the regular meeting. And that closes out the agenda? Running through the agenda?
Yes, it does.
Okay. We'll go to public comment then, next. Our first speaker for public comment is Duke Russell. Thank you to all our speakers for your patience. Duke Russell will be our first speaker, then Matt Dowd will be our second.
President Garcetti, members of the council, good morning. My name is Duke Russell. I'm an alumnus of L.A. City College and a member of the Board of Directors Hollywood High Alumni Association for 12 years. For 14 years, I have tried to help save student sports in public colleges. I just watched the four episodes of the World War II classic by Ken Burns on TV. Maybe you saw it. Thousands of those courageous young men were from L.A. high schools, as you know. I was in the ninth grade when Pearl Harbor caught us unprepared. And many of my classmates risked their lives. Many who lived came back to play football, baseball, and participated in track and field on Snyder Field at L.A. City College. It helped, Snyder Field helped win that war and has helped win other wars by preparing young men and women to save their lives and our lives. LACC is in President Garcetti's district. I request him to fight, to rally the council, to rebuild Snyder Field. It should not be destroyed by a child development center for about 30, about 53-year-olds. The CDC was forced to relocate because of that gigantic non-education public golf driving range, which was approved by the L.A. District Board of Trustees. The CDC and the Science Building should both obviously replace that golf range. Many of my young friends risked their lives, and some of them returned to play at L.A. City College. Denny Scott was one of the guys that jumped behind the German lines. Maybe you saw all those guys risking their lives to do that. Joe Rubio, Frank Carleese, Lloyd Teal, Ralph DeLeone, Vic Vargas, they returned to play on beautiful Snyder Field. I ask the city council to stand up, fight back against this small group of people who want to destroy that field. Please save it. It'll help us win future wars. We might be in World War III right now, for all we know.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Help the veterans.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your advocacy on this. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that, it's Michael Hunt, and then Arnold Sachs.
Thank you very much. I wanted to do my public comment for the benefit of the deaf, but I don't know what the sign language is for boot immobilization of my vehicle, which I've just been over and had the official hearing from the examiner, and it came back, "No probable cause." I don't know what that is in sign language either. So how about we get my councilman over here to explain to me why we're immobilizing vehicles in his district with no probable cause? There it is. That's another lawsuit. Tell Mr. Parks to keep his eye on these. They're getting out of control, Budget and Finance Committee. Speaking of which, there's a big one coming up. Now, the 11th District Councilman is sending a guy down to Venice Beach to hold these public meetings, and he doesn't know what he's talking about, and he's giving misinformation. Now, don't be talking to all the stakeholders at Venice who didn't sue. They don't care. They all went and paid rent, and he sighed, and got shops, and disappeared, and ran away. But we didn't. We're still fighting because we're the ones who obviously know what we're talking about because the judge is forcing you to settle this. But you got a guy down there telling all the people, "Oh, books." He's saying, "Books are protected." Well, all books are not protected. Otherwise, I could just go down and set up a bookstore. The only books that are protected are books that are inextricably intertwined with your speech. So if I'm talking about Jesus Christ, I can probably take donations for a Bible. But I didn't write that book, so it's not about the book. He really doesn't know what he's talking about. I signed a contract here with the city, and I'm holding you to this, so don't be trying to push me off the boardwalk with some new ordinance. This is the contract that says, "Inextricably intertwined." I signed it. I paid my money. It's a lifetime contract. Carol Sobel sued on "inextricably intertwined." Your attorney, Rocky Delgado, took it out, but now the judge is saying, "You gotta put it back in."
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Well, I'm in on that one, so...
Thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. And then Arnold Sachs will be next.
Again, we're back on the record to talk about the 4215. It's a sad day when an attorney comes down there and really doesn't know what they're talking about, representing the city of Los Angeles and saying that it's the Constitution, the one that they have in progress now, is not properly or has its legal challenges. Number 2, 24 times being arrested as an African-American. When I walk in that United States District Court, I walk in there alone. I'm the only African-American that's there. So you can't tell me how it feels to be discriminated or segregation, or to talk about segregating the boardwalk from an I and P zone. It's just not gonna happen. I'm gonna be suing you each and every time. Better yet, if you want to see the Comico Show, go to youtube.com/LacityHall. You will see the 11th District Attorney and I battle it out in a showdown. And what it comes down is to the public opinion riding with me. But like I said, I would like to retire this T-shirt and put it up there. It's been 540 days since I've been, you know, really, really taken advantage of as an Right is right. Wrong is wrong. Civil rights has been violated. The city attorney has been a part of it. When they lie to you, they lie to the whole city of Los Angeles. I think the challenge for you, me, Mr. President, is to retire this T-shirt, put it up there, and stop the segregation and the discrimination.
Thank you. And again, I would ask you, using my right to free speech, to please not wear that shirt in here. I know that it's been to many folks... Excuse me, sir? It's my turn to say this. It's offensive to a number of members here. It's offensive to a number of members of the public, and we would ask you to not wear that. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you very much. I have two items I'd like to talk about. One is yesterday's board meeting at the Metro Center. I have good news for you, Mr. President. The East Side Extension is actually a construction committee. And I found that out at the board meeting yesterday, which is, in a sense, some sad business information to find out because it shows just how far out of the loop the city council is, that nobody here knows that there's actually a construction committee that is in charge. Which leads to the other question, if there's a construction committee for the East Side Extension that oversees almost a $900 million project, why do we need authorities for these other construction lines, for the other lines that run through L.A.? Why is there an Expo Line? Why is there a Gold Line? Why is there a Pasadena Gold Line Construction Authority? The Foothill Construction Authority that was established in 1990 along with the Gold Line hasn't had anything done to it, yet the committee, the construction committee for the East Side Extension, has got... committee for the East Side Extension, has got nine-hundred-million-dollar project going. Additionally, I have some information I'd like to toss to Mr. Rosendahl, Councilman Rosendahl. Yesterday, I read in the newspaper that I believe the FAA had turned down United's request to establish a flight from LAX to China. In doing so, I was thought, considering, is it possible, because I know that you're looking to alleviate some traffic at LAX, what about having the FAA order foreign airlines to fly in and out of Ontario as an alternative to landing at LAX? It would do several things. It would alleviate some airline traffic, it would alleviate passenger traffic, and it would create an economic, economic boom to the Ontario area.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
It would do several things. I think it's something that should be looked into. I don't know exactly what steps need to be taken, but I think it's worth looking at. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure, as always, to be part of the parade of usual suspects. I want to apologize to Ms. Perry for not being here and for overrunning my time last time, and to Mr. Garcetti for not being here on Tuesday when he called me for comment on the Neighborhood Council Review Commission. And with your, with your permission, I'd like to talk about that Neighborhood Council Review Commission right now, and I hope that this is both put into the register and is thought of clearly by all the members of the council. After fifteen months of very difficult deliberations, you have before you now seventy-three recommendations. I want to talk about the last one first because I would very much like to recommend that you consider the last one immediately. The last one is that this whole process goes on again within seven years. In other words, to repeat the process. The feedback loop, which permits us to look at our neighborhood council system and review it critically as the Neighborhood Council Review Commission did, needs to be repeated and repeated. Just for the record, and I'll look for some eye contact any time now, the newspapers are speaking of the city council and the whole charter being reviewed. I think that's an interesting concept, but certainly the neighborhood councils, who are definitely a work in process needed. I would also address your attention to the recommendation number sixteen, which says that there should be prompt and direct response when neighborhood councils ask for information or wish to provide information to their representatives. And then the big one, number forty-two. Number forty-two is the definition of a neighborhood council. Here, I'm going to differ with my very respected member of the eleventh district, Mr. Rosendahl, in saying that this is an intent to open the neighborhood councils to everyone and not make them homeowners associations.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Yvonne Michelle Autry is our next speaker. Oh, yes.
Just wanted to correct the record for those who might be listening or watching. I was here on Tuesday. I had the pleasure of thanking the commissioners who worked so hard for the last year in the areas that overlapped my council district and was, you know, if one looks back at the tape of the meeting, they'll see that I was here and I actually.
I can confirm that, too.
And I believe you were here, too. Yes.
Absolutely, I was. Thank you very much for that clarification. Yvonne Michelle Autry, and then after that will be Susie Meekins.
Thank you for an opportunity to address the city council. He has a right to wear that T-shirt. It's not true, of course, for all Caucasians. However, as a black woman, I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that at least five black women have been brutalized by the police, and one was murdered. They were not carrying weapons, and I'd appreciate your attention because you're here to serve the constituents. I know you're paid a great deal of money to do so, and I'd appreciate your attention. Also, the woman that was murdered was choked to death by the police officers last month. They were homeless women, even if they were mentally ill or on medication, they should have been restrained appropriately, hospitalized, or incarcerated. Okay? That's racial profiling, and it's murder. It's murder. And it seems that this is a covert return to a white supremacist government. You see where these principles are, that homeless people, people of color, poor people, our lives seem to, the value has diminished. Well, that's not going to be accepted. So I think that's why this gentleman is wearing this T-shirt, and you like to ignore it, again, because you get incentives, you get kickbacks, and so you're very comfortable in your lifestyles. And so our testimonies are here to reveal what's really happening. Two weeks ago, I was here, and Mr. Wesson was promoting animals. I love animals. I've lived with animals all my life. However, I think your priorities are misplaced. Loft dwellers can afford, you see, the most expensive purebred animals. You don't need to promote animals. Your priority should be house the homeless, eliminate the blight that the incentives you're receiving is creating. You're creating the crisis of homelessness. Then you're deploying more police officers to brutalize the homeless, incarcerate them, hospitalized them, or put them in concentration camps, or God knows what they're doing to them. If you prioritize and house the homeless and make sure there's adequate affordable housing, instead of providing housing, you know, for police or anyone that doesn't need it, then you wouldn't have the blight, you see, that you're having to pay these officers for.
Thank you for your comments this morning.
It's a ridiculous facade, and we're not all blind.
Thank you, ma'am. Susie Meekins is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President. My, my name is Susie Meekin. I'm a resident of the Watts neighborhood, and I'm here to ask for help because our community has been neglected by our elected officials, city departments, and our so-called community leaders for a long time. And when seniors, now seniors got together and asked Human Relations to come in and help our community, this was the same day that Ms. Han office called him to come down to see about these, all the shootings that were going on in Watts. At that meeting, at the Human Relations meeting that morning, he told us that he would help us, he would extend his staff for us for three years. Ms. Han has taken up almost two years of that time having meetings, and it's not with the community. You can't have a community meeting at ten o'clock in the morning. Kids are in school, people are at work, and we would like to see if we can get this last year of Human Relations being, coming to our community to get them to straighten out our community for what we did come down here and ask for. We went to the commission board and asked them. We had a private meeting with Rabbi Freling. He came out to Watts and talked with seniors that were not afraid to speak out about what is going on in Watts. And when we came back and he told us that he would extend his time to us, this is what happened. There is no community meetings being held in Watts. Those meetings in the morning are for nonprofits, city employees, three people from Nicholson, three people from Nick, and I wish that we can get that time back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meekins. Appreciate your comments today. That closes our general public comment. If we can go through the items called special.
First item called special is number thirteen. That was from Cars From the Public.
Okay. That's number thirteen.
All right, welcome to Channel Thirty-five on the motions to, I guess, to adopt the California Constitutional and Government Code, Section 53753. If I'm not correct, that's for lighting. I totally agree. I think that you should put it on the agenda in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight for three hundred and fifteen dollars, start, or, oh, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that will be collected for a city assessment for fees. I totally agree with that. That's a good, good fee for a good cause. I think we'd need more lighting and streetlights in the city of Los Angeles, and I do approve of that one. So if I can get a, a, aye vote on that, all yeses. Do we have a form here that we can get a yes on that? Give me twelve yeses on that one. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Can open the roll on item thirteen, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That will carry over one week as an ordinance. Next item, please.
Next is item number fifteen, and that was called special by Cars From the Public.
Okay, Mr. Dowd.
Yeah, thank you, Matt Dowd, Channel Thirty-five. In case you don't know who I am, I've been here once or twice to mention some of these things going through City Hall. This one, I want to explain, this is the opportunity to go to a public hearing if you, if you want them to go ahead with this assessment for two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, twenty-eight. It's an annual assessment to maintain the street lighting. And I want to tell people it is very important because you might find yourself in the same situation as me. If there's no street lighting, the Department of Transportation, LAPD, may not see these operating permits, if you have one on your vehicle, and then put a boot on there. So I'm all in favor. I, too, agree that this should be a unanimous vote to put this ordinance to the public at a general meeting in their area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd, do you want to take up item nineteen and twenty-seven as well? We can take those for you right now as well. If we can take those up together, Madam Clerk, at the same time as fifteen. So nineteen is the special events motions, and twenty-seven is the special event.
I prefer that you just vote that one through.
Please go ahead.
If you can.
Nineteen, please.
I just need to gather my notes for a minute.
Now's the time for nineteen, sir. If you'd like to address this, please do right now.
Okay, reset the clock. Thank you. Okay, we talked about these a lot, and this is one of Zuma Dog's favorite topics. I want to give him a shout out because I know he wants to be here, but as a show of good faith, I'm keeping him out of City Hall for a couple of weeks. Do my, you know, do my thing towards the smooth operation of the meeting. Unfortunately, I do have to comment on this one because Jack Weiss, you can tell Mr. Weiss, he's famous for his two thousand and one memo about these special event fee waivers. And I'm starting to get a little hot and bothered about this one, but I'll, so I'll just tone it down a little for the benefit of all the Channel Thirty-five viewers. Number, item K, it's declaring the leather meets lace at the Playboy Mansion a special So, you know, my questions immediately is what city officials are attending this function? Probably Mr. Zine, from what I've seen of his leather wear on the, on the blog. But this, you know, these are meant to be the benefit of the public. So October sixth, the Playboy Mansion.
Sir, I'll give you a warning about addressing members, respectively. We have a thing that's up there that requires you to please address this with respect, and you have no evidence or proof of any of that. We appreciate your comments on this item, but please keep to that policy. Thank you.
There is proof of everything, if I, if I mention it, believe me, there's photographic evidence. So, in fact, you didn't have a bad pair of shorts on at the Million Trees Initiative either. That was pretty cute as well, but.
Sir, this is your second warning. Will you please address this? Item twenty-seven is before us, too, Mr. Dowd. I'd like to address twenty-seven. Track map approvals.
Oh, is that my cue to begin? Final track maps, another item you can find out about at zoomatimes.com. Zuma Dog, he's training me up on these. You know, more development for the city that the infrastructure cannot handle. Quimby fees of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I mean, what kind of development is that? Now, the, the infrastructure in this city was designed a long time ago because it's an earthquake-prone area, and this city was intentionally designed and built, spread out the way it is. But now, obviously, there's money to be made in going up, cramming people into the city. The traffic's already a nightmare on the west side, and these track maps are just further evidence of the, the way, even in my council district, eleven, the development is just going berserk. It's everywhere. The traffic's a nightmare there, too, now. Water shortages, people can't afford the rent. I mean, when does it stop? Eventually, the money has to run out. So I'm concerned about these track maps. And if you want more information, like I said, go to zoomatimes.com. I'm Matt Dowd, Channel Thirty-five, part of the Outlaws. Got Michael Hunt coming up right after me. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing on those three items. If we can please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we missed one public comment card. Sarah Fisk, if you'd like to come forward. My apologies. We got that at the back. Very good, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon to you. And I especially want to tell you how grateful I am for this kind of thing, which prompted the action. I know, at least in part, that Mr. Cardenas asked to amend his original ordinance, and I just want to, number one, encourage all of you to support this, please. Number two, I have a question perhaps this council can answer. Will this become effective at?
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisk, we have your card also on item twenty-nine, but this is for general public comment, so would you like to?
No, no, this is actually specific to the, to this.
Okay, so hold on one second because we don't have twenty-nine before us legally right now, so you, we need you.
Okay.
We will, we, if we, why don't we, if there's not objection, if you don't want to speak at general public comment as well, do you want to waive your?
Well, I, I kind of did want to, but since that's passed, I'm not going to take your time.
No, no, we'd be happy to hear your general public comment. If not, we can take up item twenty-nine right now, and you can continue.
Okay, okay.
And Madam Clerk, if we'll please take up item twenty-nine, and we'll, we'll start your time over. My apologies.
And then I'll start again.
Go ahead. Go ahead, if you'd like to start on twenty-nine.
Oh, okay, on item twenty-nine. I want to thank Mr. Cardenas so much for speaking to me last week, and the thought that he's put into this. I know it was a thoughtful move on his part, and I so appreciate it. My question to you is, will this become effective? I mean, I want to encourage all of you to support Mr. Cardenas's move on this. I, I'm still very, very interested in going forward and making, yes.
Mr. President. In all fairness to our constituents, maybe what I should do is speak first because I think she's going to change her presentation.
Based on that?
Based on that.
Okay, would you like to hear Mr. Cardenas first?
Okay, yes.
Come on, have a seat, and we'll make sure we save the balance of your time. And Mr. Cardenas, if you'd like to address this issue.
Thank you very much. After speaking with you and hearing the comments from the community, what I wanted to do is preserve the opportunity to pull this property off of the auction for this coming Monday and take the time to speak to the departments, the various departments, and to reflect on the things that you told me when you, you and I spoke here in this room. And what I've concluded is it's in the best interest of the community to go ahead and leave it on auction on Monday, okay? So it will go on auction on Monday if, in fact, my colleagues support me on note and file today, okay? So in all fairness, I wanted you to gather your thoughts again before the, and if you could restart the clock, please, when she speaks on this item, so that she can let me know now how she feels about, you know, us continuing to put this for auction. In addition to that, for the community, the community needs to understand, right now, this building, colleagues, is valued at a million dollars. It is within the library department. Every single one of us knows, especially in our poorer communities, like some of my district in the San Fernando Valley, our library department is underfunded, they have many issues that they need to fix to properly serve our community. When this goes to sale on Monday, what will happen is, if it's successfully sold, that money will stay within the library department. It will not go to the general fund, and it will be used for libraries in Van Nuys and in the San Fernando Valley in my district so we can render better service for the children. When it comes to symphonies and music for the children, et cetera, I look forward to working with you and anybody that you'd like to bring to the table so that we can provide more opportunities to the children of the community, and I'm committed to sponsoring many of those activities and bringing other sponsors so we can elevate that music in our community of Van Nuys. And down the street from this library, it just so happens that we have a brand-new city facility where we can provide opportunities so that we can have meetings, we can have practices, and we can go ahead and even have music in our amphitheater right there, just a block away from this historical building. Those individuals who. Those individuals who are concerned about this being a historical building and somebody buying it and knocking it down, understand this. It almost takes an act of Congress for somebody to knock down a historical building that is part of the National Registry. Therefore, I feel confident that whoever buys this building, should it be successfully sold on auction on Monday along with various buildings in the city, that what we will have is we will have a building that will remain there, and if not, this building will be in existence for many, many generations to come. Thank you.
Well, this surely blindsided me. It certainly blindsided me, and all that I had to say, um, then I, I, uh, I recommend, and I strongly urge, please, could I have your attention, those of you that are going to be voting? This is not something that we cannot take and create, an art center, a center for the fine arts, in the lobbies or in, in the open-air areas of the, uh, of, of the new building, the Browdy Building. That wouldn't work, because what we need is an area. What we need is a center. What I see here is that this is going to be more office space. I know who's going to buy it. He's going to convert it to office space. We have a glut of office space in the San Fernando, in, in the Van Nuys area. There is a glut. Please, I don't want to lose any time. Uh, and what I want you to know is that we are, we, those people of Van Nuys, yes, they can, the libraries can use it, Mr. Cardenas, but they can all, they, but we also need to have a place where they can come, and where they can bring their parents, and where they can perform. I'm not getting your, anybody's attention.
Yes, you have, you have our attention, ma'am. You have your, we have, you have our attention. Please continue.
Okay. The, and, and what I, really, give us some time. At least, at least postpone this. Give us some time. I, what, my, my question to you originally when I came here is, how do I go about, I want to lease this building? I want to lease this building for the purpose of bringing music, for bringing art. We, don't the people of Van Nuys, yes, they deserve an extra book or, or an extra trip to the library, but don't they deserve to be able to come to a facility and to see fine artists perform?
Thank you, ma'am.
Fine music?
Thank you.
Something that will help soften our lives?
Our next speaker is Mr. Wiseman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cardenas, members of the council. When I came here on this issue, the old Van Nuys Library, uh, a week or so ago, and when I took it to the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, I brought with me two formal declarations from the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, recommending, number one, that the, that this library be made a historic monument for the city, recommending, two, that this library not be sold. Now, as I read the document, which is the supplement to Council File zero-six-one-three-six-one, it reads that to establish minimum bids to withdraw the Van Nuys Library from the list of surplus properties. Well, that has already been established. What we've been trying to advocate, and Mr. Cardenas knows it full well, is that this offer to sell the library, we be withdrawn from the market. I do not know what you can do with what is now the eleventh hour, but I would strongly encourage you to withdraw this library from the market. Mr. Cardenas, what you have said is absolutely correct. This library is a beautiful building. It is a Van Nuys, um, heritage, and it's something that we need to use for Van Nuys, not for the private offices of some, uh, city-related, uh, businesses. This is not where it needs to go. Please, do what you can, and, Mr. Cardenas, maybe you can, uh, discuss this further in your discussion with this board about how this library can be saved. We have at least four different units who want to use this library. We're ready to lease it. We're ready to help in the rebuilding of it. We're ready to start with a private-public partnership of it, and we're not dilettantes. We're for real. We're very much for real. Please, consider our, our concerns, consider what you're about to do.
Next speaker is Mr. Hunt. Excuse me, our next speaker is Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Cardenas, I, I think your constituents are telling you that they want this kept as a library, and I think that you should really understand, um, the hard work that they put into this. Um, here's a community group effort, again, to keep a library going and to keep people working and to keep the community viable and in strength. I think a good library, keeping it going, renewing it, or doing whatever you have to do for the community, kids always need to read, and, um, getting some good city programs in there would be the best thing that, that I'm hearing for this library, this historical spot. So at the eleventh hour, you should take it off and reconsider and find some refinancing, such as Wendy Grill would do, and get some money to expand this library from the, um, perhaps from, you would say, from a private group, uh, in Van Nuys that, you know, have some community value. And at this time, I'd like to waive my fifty-two seconds, too.
We cannot waive times, Mr. Hunt. We cannot yield, yield time under our council rules. Uh, Mr. Hunt knows that as well, but Mr. Dowd is our next speaker.
Don't say "you" again. I'm trying to help you out here. Withdraw this property from the list of surplus properties. Obviously, here's the community come down here, they're concerned, but, you know, a birdie just landed on my shoulder and said lawsuits over this one. And, you know, I may be inclined to just jump in on that one, too. You know, I've got the current one at the beach, I got the boot, and now I got the library. So, but I don't want to make light of it either. This is a serious concern this woman has here, coming to you. She's obviously, uh, very passionate about it, and, Mr. Wiseman, I'm sure Zuma Dog would have something to say, too, if he was here. But yeah, please reconsider. Um, I won't yell unless you, uh, abuse the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last public speaker card. Um, Mr. Alarcon is next on the list.
Members, um, I rise because I think, uh, some of the public comments were, um, were inappropriate, quite frankly. Uh, there, there are two issues at hand here. One is whether or not this, uh, is a cultural site that should remain. That's one issue. But if we were going to keep it, and the use for that site is a totally separate subject. And I, I rise as, as the former senator that, that had this building in the, in my district, and a lifelong San Fernando Valley resident. Uh, for somebody to come before this council and suggest that, when they have no demonstrated ability to raise money for the kind of activity that's being proposed, uh, that we block a process on the basis of some, some speculation that, that all of a sudden they're going to be able to raise money, is, is not the way to do good public policy. Uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not suggesting, I haven't even taken a position on, on the issue of the, uh, whether or not the building should be kept, but, but it is, it is wrong to try to drive public policy on the basis of, of, uh, promoting a program that frankly is, is probably going to generate most benefit to the individual promoting that program. Because there has not been a demonstrated ability to raise money. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm not convinced by the arguments raised by, uh, this particular, uh, group of public commentators. But I would, uh, I, I, but I do think it, that the conversation about whether or not this is a cultural monument is one that, uh, certainly I want to listen to as Mr. Cardenas moves forward, uh, with this, uh, this issue. But I just thought it was fair to make a comment about, uh, about, but, I mean, if we were going to utilize this for something else, I mean, obviously, we would want to get other proposals, we want to hear what the opportunities are, but I, for one, am, am not inclined to support a program that has not demonstrated the ability to raise sufficient money to operate.
Mr. Cardenas is, uh, next, oh, sorry, Mr. Labange, this is, but do you want to?
No, I just wanted to say, I think one of the challenges that Mr. Cardenas articulated well is the library department has certain requirements. Am I correct? And they are the property owner above and beyond. Is that correct, Mr. Cardenas, there? So the challenge is not there for us to make a decision, if it was a surplus public works piece of property. So that's a very important hurdle you have to get over. Next, there is protection under the law, the National Register, that protects that building, and a new developer may come in, which will be able to enhance that. One of the great things, and I'm a, a, a believer in preservation strongly, is that maybe something can come out of that even better that would be an enhancer. And lastly, the opportunities for people to meet, uh, in the community are not far away. I know you love the building, but the councilman of the district has to weigh these issues, and we have to weigh those issues as well. And one of the toughest issues is, if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, you tell me, Mr. City Attorney, is that the library department is saying, call on this property. Whatever the sale is, it has to go back to the library department, and that's part of the process, right?
The library commission has control of its property under Charter Section five-thirty-four.
Different than if it was a public works piece of property or some non-attached property. So, Mr. Cardenas also articulated that this property has a year-plus of time to try to find a new life in it, and I know that has happened at several of the old buildings of Wiltshire. So, Mr. Cardenas, I stand with you on this tough, challenging issue as we try to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Ma'am, we cannot, unless somebody reopens the public hearing, we cannot. It's very, uh, clear in both our, our council rules. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. You know, there's a saying, no good deed goes unpunished. This auction has been properly noticed. It has been recorded here in these chambers and the Van Nuys chambers for weeks and weeks now, that members of the Van Nuys community that actually spoke today have known about this sale for weeks and weeks. So, and nobody's actually said that there's a legal challenge on the public notice. Now, what I've tried to do in thinking about this, and this has occupied a lot of my time and staff time and energy, is try to figure out what's best for this community on this matter. And I feel confident and comfortable that at the open auction, if there's anybody in this room or anybody who would like to buy the building, they can go and do it on Monday. No one can or will be denied the opportunity to buy this building. Secondly, maybe one of the reasons why some people may not want to buy the building, even though they'd like to use the building, is because they can't afford to buy it and maintain it. Well, that's why I think it's the responsible thing to do, is to allow this building to go to auction. It is protected on the National Registry as a historical building, and may I remind you, if you just take a walk a few blocks in any direction, or you look around this room, you will find publicly-owned buildings, but I would venture to say that you'll find buildings right around the corner from us who are, that are extremely elaborate, there are historical structures, and the private community has done a tremendous job in adhering to their responsibility of preserving these commu, these buildings. In addition to that, I'm really sorry, a lease of this building at this time will deny the children and families in the heart of the San Fernando Valley the services that they deserve today, when it comes to the library system that we have to serve them in the Van Nuys community and the surrounding community. And I'll say again, as Councilman Alarcon articulated as well, if someone will have demonstrated to a decent degree their ability to obtain this building, maintain this building, and actually provide community services out of this building without having to come back and say, I'm really sorry, City of Los Angeles, we need you to kick in a hundred thousand here, a hundred thousand there, which we don't have, then I would go ahead and do that. With all due respect, Ms. Sarah Fisk, as you're screaming across the room here, I have personally talked to you and asked you how much money you could raise, and I'm not going to embarrass you by telling people the number you came up with, but with all due respect, it is a far, far, far cry of what it takes to maintain this building. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you appreciate the fact that I am very sincere in what I'm trying to do here and what is going on here. If somebody fails to want to recognize the entirety of the issue, that is something for them to contend with. I have considered the entirety of this issue to the best of my ability as a representative of this community on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, and I urge you, colleagues, to please, let's put this building and this situation where it belongs, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. That is the last speaker from the council, so we, if I have no other folks, this has been moved to be received and filed, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, ma'am. That with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on receiving filings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That will be the action without objection today. Next item, please.
Next are items eighteen and twenty, and those are called special by cards from the public.
Okay, uh, let's take those up together. Mr. Dowd on item number eighteen, would you like to go first? And then, Mr. Hunt, if you want, take eighteen and twenty together.
Yeah, thank you, Matt Dowd. Uh, just want to, uh, make my final comment, City Council today. Talked about these ones before, this important issue, we're, we're looking for, uh, people responsible for, uh, the death of Jesse Zimmerman on September two, two thousand and six.
Sorry, sir, this is the item eighteen you filled a card out for, not twenty?
Oh, you're not giving me twenty? Are we eighteen or twenty?
Filled out a card for eighteen.
Eighteen. Sorry. Uh, rent escrow account program. Yep, these are, uh, some of the properties that are now being released from, uh, the rent escrow account. Obviously landlords here who weren't keeping their buildings in compliance, so we, uh, we hold on to the rent here in the city until they bring the building up to code, and then we can allow them to take that rent money. It's kind of a way of holding them accountable.
Thank you.
I'd like to say hello to Norm.
Mr. Hunt, uh, nice, uh, on number eighteen and twenty.
Mr. Garcetti, I can't go on both of them because I'm dyslexic.
We have three minutes, so do you want a minute on eighteen first, or you want two minutes on eighteen?
No, no, wait, 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 hold. Let's, I'm dyslexic, so you can.
Number eighteen, we'll do for two minutes.
I can do, I can do one at a time.
That's number eighteen. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, now, this is pursuant to the ordinance of one-seven-three-eight-one-oh, adopting, um, a resolution for property and rent escrow, making the owners clean up their troubles. I do believe in that, and yes, I want a yes vote on this. Um, I think this is a worthy cause. I think our rent owners should clean up their properties and make it, uh, rent, um, to, uh, that their tenants have clean and, um, taking all the lead paint and all the other stuff out of it, redo it. I think that's a good code, a code to enforce the unit, uh, citation. I'm going to vote yes on this, if I can tabulate the votes on eighteen and get a yes vote on this.
Okay, that closes public comment on eighteen. If we can, please tabulate the vote and prepare the roll, tabulate the vote. Thank you.
Eleven ayes.
And item twenty is next, Mr. Hunt.
Okay. Uh, can you reset the clock, please?
Go ahead, begin. We'll make, we'll take care of that.
Okay. And this is for the guy, Jesse Zimmerman. The reward, um, do I say how much the reward is? I think it should be, uh, fifty thousand, I think it should be a hundred thousand, uh, for Jesse Zimmerman. I think that we should approve this. I think that, um, when this kind of thing happen, um, I'm all for finding out who did what, why, when, and where. Um, if you can extend this to a hundred thousand dollars and then get a yes vote on it, that would really help me out and helps, uh, I guess, the Los Angeles Police Department or the people who's going to be telling on this guy. A hundred thousand dollars sounds a lot better than fifty thousand, and then to give them an incentive, an extra incentive for, uh, Jesse Zimmerman's death, um, I'd like to go forth with that as soon as possible. Um, I think we should go in and reframe it to a hundred thousand dollars.
If we can please tabulate the, sorry, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on item twenty?
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And, uh, I'd like to recognize now, uh, Mr. Rosendahl for a very special presentation. for a very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this moment. I'd like to ask Phil Tate and Liz, his great wife, to come on over. And my staff is here with me. You know, when they're young and they join our staff, they bring their youth, their vigor, and their incredible intelligence. Phil Tate showed up in my campaign office when I was a candidate for this job. He's a gentle giant, and he helped me get elected. Then he went to work for me as the director of my legislative activities here. And, you know, brevity is something we all, as elected colleagues, need from staff at times when we don't have time to read everything. We really don't know half the things we have to vote on. We need staff to help us through that process. And Phil has been able to bend over toward me as I'm sitting there and in the most concise, articulate way, help me figure out what I'm to do on a given issue. Now, it's my decision, but if you rely on good staff, and all of us here, council members, rely on our staff to help us do our job. And as part of the Team Rosendahl group, Phil Tate has been an incredible contributor. I just want to read one sentence about him. "Phil Tate brings to everyone, as he does, a powerful intellect, a dry and mischievous sense of humor, a friendly demeanor, and an unflappable presence, and too many other things to mention positively." He's leaving us from peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to a real job out there that will pay him a real salary, and he'll be able and his wife to move forward with their lives. And actually, I'm excited about where he's going and what he's going to do. But his greatest trait, folks, is his honesty, his integrity, and his brilliance, all wrapped in one. And the smartest thing he ever did was marry Liz, and we all went to that wedding as well. So on behalf of my staff and your wife and everybody else, we want to congratulate you onward and upward. We're going to miss you in the city, but you've been a great contributor to the city and to all of our well-being. Bless you, Phil Tate.
Thank you. Well, if he's going to praise me for my brevity, I should probably keep this short. I want to thank Bill and Mike for giving me the opportunity to work here. It's been very educational. I've definitely enjoyed working with everyone around the horseshoe and with the staff of District 11. It's a great group of people. They make coming to work every day enjoyable. So I will miss you all, but not for too long since I'll be with Alan Mattens doing land use.
Nice plug.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Liz, because she's been very supportive, never gets mad at me for staying late. Was there during the campaign, sitting at the table in Brentwood as the enemy's territory, helping me get him elected so I could have this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Phil. We will miss you as an official city staffer, but look forward to seeing you back here in City Hall very soon. Congratulations. Next order of business, Madam Click.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Mr. President, there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Parks requests to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on October 19 for city business. This meets city policy.
That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on October 26, 30, and 31, and November 2 for personal business. This meets city policy.
Those excuses are granted as well?
Councilmember Han requests to be excused on October 31 for city business. This meets city policy.
She's excused.
Councilmember Perry requests for city business to be excused, to leave at 11:30 a.m. on October 16 and 30, to leave at 12:00 noon on October 26 and December 11, and to arrive at 11:00 a.m. on October 23 for personal business. A motion is required.
I will move that and second it by Ms. Perry. Without objection, that excuse will be granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, are there announcements, colleagues, in meetings? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to invite everybody, my colleagues and the whole city, to come to the Abbot Kenny Festival. Abbot Kenny Boulevard has become an amazing part of my district. And this Sunday, all day long, we're going to have a festival. I'm going to show up at 12:30, and I'm going to go to the Green Tent and talk about environmental issues in the city. And then about 1:15, we're going to have a big award ceremony where I'm going to be giving out awards to people in Venice who've made a difference. But to the community out there, the Venice Festival there at Abbot Kenny is fantastic. You'll have a great Sunday. Come on to Venice. We'd love to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And remember, colleagues, we have a camera in the back for items after the weekend, so I appreciate that was a weekend one. But if we have announcements in the district, please take advantage of Channel 35 and do a PSA on that. Mr. Labange.
Thank you for your leadership on the new Silver Lake Library, groundbreaking tomorrow in the morning.
Thank you.
Lindell Boulevard in Silver Lake. And also, thank you for the San Gennaro.
10 a.m. tomorrow.
Festival, all three days, all at Hollywood and Hawthorne, right by Hollywood High School. American Heart Association has a walk in Exposition Park, which is so important. And also, we want to thank everybody for their wonderful contributions to the city and their performances as good visitors to our parks and enjoy our parks this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that one of our long-term pastors, who's now retired, Reverend Chip Murray, turns 78 this week. And I think we all owe him a happy birthday.
Absolutely. Very happy birthday to Reverend Murray. No other announcements? Can I ask everybody to rise, please, for adjourning motions? I can ask everybody to rise, please? Colleagues, three adjourning motions today. First, starting with a friend and a City Hall graduate, who some of you may know, Larry Pickens, who is a dear member of the Echo Park community, who's unfortunately passed away this past Saturday, September 22. Larry Pickens was, for Jackie Goldberg many years, the receptionist in the field office for CD 13. Jeff Horton, his partner, was on the school board for many years as well. And the two of them experienced, just a year ago, their house burning down and recently rebuilt there in Echo Park. Larry Pickens was born in 1953 in Jackson, Mississippi. Spent his childhood in the country around Jackson, growing up as a southern country boy. The mid-'60s, his whole extended family moved bit by bit to Los Angeles, and they established themselves in South LA. And his large extended family are still everywhere here in Los Angeles and South LA. He worked steadily, got his AA degree at Los Angeles City College, and then his BA at Cal State Los Angeles. In '83, he was drawn to Jackie Goldberg's first school board campaign where he met Jeff Horton, and they've been together ever since, 24 years. They bought a house in Echo Park in my neighborhood in 1984, burned down, excuse me, in 2005, but they built it bigger and better and continue to live there. He was a field deputy during Jackie's two terms on council from 1993 to 2001. He was often the voice of CD 13's field office on Sunset during that time and worked on the laser after-school program. They adopted children in 1995 and 1999. And he leaves behind Dante Pickens Horton at 17, senior at the Frostick School. And Lorenzo Pickens Horton is 15, attending the School of Global Studies at the Miguel Contreras Learning Center. He was a great member of the Greater Alesian Echo Park Neighborhood Council, elected in the first round of council elections and has served since then, committed to the community, always a bridge between groups and an advocate to concrete action to help the community. He helped get a grant to landscape the Long Bear Median at Lemoine, one of his proudest achievements, and was famous in the Alesian Heights neighborhood for his annual Halloween plays that he staged in his garage. He was a planner and a doer, constant flow of ideas and projects, wonderful sense of humor, loved by all, a great neighbor, a great partner, a great father. He died too soon, and he will be missed by all. Hey, Larry Pickens, rest in peace. All members will put on that for sure. Secondly, just very briefly, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Kenji Nagai. We have reports that dozens of Burmese have been killed in the crackdowns. Some of you know I spent two summers in Burma working with many of the pro-democracy forces that right now are alongside monks. Monks have been killed. But Kenji Nagai was the photographer for AFP, Japanese photographer, very famous and very accomplished, who was killed by the military regime in Burma. We pray for that entire nation and for the safety of its people. And lastly, Erwin Escobar was a 14-year-old, the second 14-year-old from Belmont, who was killed in the last two months in my district. One earlier, one boy who lived two blocks away from me, we already adjourned in memory of. Unfortunately, last night, many of us, including Jeff Carr, the mayor's gang specialist, were on the corner of Second and Kenmore at a candlelight vigil. He was taken earlier this week at his mother's birthday party. He went out to move the car for her, and somebody came up and shot and killed him. For his friends and family, to his younger sister and younger brother, and his mother Maria, Erwin Escobar, who's in heaven, rest in peace. Ms. Grul.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Zein wanted to be on this one as well, for Senior Lead Officer George Flores. On Tuesday night, September 25, Los Angeles Police Department Senior Lead Officer George Flores passed away after a valiant battle with a serious illness. A 19-and-a-half-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department, he spent 17 years serving the city at the Van Nuys area. For the past 12 years, he's been a senior lead officer serving my district, Valley Glen and North Sherman Oaks area of Council District 2. Known for his quiet demeanor, George worked with the community to address a myriad of quality of life and crime problems. He worked very closely with the community to develop innovative solutions to some long-term difficult issues that had been brewing for a long time. He will be truly missed by the community members who were active there at the Van Nuys Police Station for his efforts in Valley Glen and Sherman Oaks in my district. He'll be missed by his coworkers and member of the council and mayor staff with whom he worked so closely. George is survived by his life partner, Steve Perez, his mother, Julia Flores, and sisters Sylvia Flores, Linda Flores, Lemus, and Elizabeth Flores Rodriguez. Services will be held a Wednesday, October 3, at 10 a.m. at St. John the Baptist de La Salle in Granada Hills, and the interment will follow immediately at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills. He was a great senior lead officer, someone I had the pleasure of working with. And we have missed him during his illness during the last year, but had sent all our prayers and wishes to him and to his entire family.